Good evening and welcome to our council meeting for March 16th. The meeting is hereby called to order. Would you please join me and us in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
of the United States of America
And to the republic For which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember McNamie?
Here.
Mayor Protem Angler?
Here.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Present. Thank you. We don't have any requests for a continuance of any public hearing or agenda item, so we will go straight to special presentations with our City Manager Drew Powers for the latest update on COVID-19. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill De La Peña. Thank you. I'll be brief tonight, as I know we have a busy agenda ahead of us. The big news today, obviously, is that the county, effective tomorrow, will be moving into the red tier. Great news for our businesses. That will take restaurant operations indoors up to 25% capacity. It will allow 50% capacity in retail establishments, gyms and fitness centers at 10%, and so on. There's quite a few additional components to that. So I did want to share that really good news. The county, however, is continuing to stress that there are variants of COVID that are circulating. Those variants are concerning, and so people should still continue to practice those safe measures that we've all become so familiar with. In terms of vaccinations, the county is approaching 200,000 first-dose vaccinations given, about 81,000 second-dose vaccinations given. The numbers as of today, 79 additional cases reported, two additional deaths, taking us to a total of 934 deaths since the onset of the pandemic here in Ventura County. A lot more information is up and available at VenturaCountyRecovers.org. That's your location to sign up for vaccinations, to get the latest information, to find out all the various components of the red tier and what that includes, and hopefully we'll be on to the orange tier and others in short order here. Vaccination pace continues to increase and improve, and we hope we've all tracked the news. We hope that as we move into May and June, that we'll be into a place where some relative normalcy can begin to take effect. Now, that's it for my report this evening. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much. Now, our second special presentation. I welcome our new District Attorney, Ventura County's newest District Attorney, Eric Nasarenko. He was appointed just a few weeks ago unanimously by all five members of the Board of Supervisors. And Mr. Nasarenko asked if he could introduce himself to the City of Thousand Oaks and all the residents, and I'm so excited that he is here with us tonight. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be before you, Mayor Bill De La Peña, Mayor Protem Angler, Members of the Thousand Oaks City Council, City Manager Powers, and Chief Freihoff. My name's Eric Nasarenko, and I pledge to the Board of Supervisors as well as to the public that after my appointment, I would reach out to all of our city councils. And I want to let Thousand Oaks know that they are the first city council in the East County that I am reaching out to. Earlier this month, I reached out to the City of Port Winomee, and obviously tonight, to the City of Thousand Oaks. I want to begin by thanking the City of Thousand Oaks for their ongoing collaboration and partnership with the Community Prosecution Program. As you know, there is a memorandum of understanding between our office and the City of Thousand Oaks, wherein you pay $75,000, which helps offset the cost of a community prosecutor. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about what you are getting for that funding. This is not only a community prosecutor, that is someone who works in collaboration and closely with the Thousand Oaks Police Department. It's also somebody who, pardon me, who reviews search warrants. In fact, in 2020, this individual by the name of Ben Moreno reviewed 273 search warrants that were presented to him by the City of Thousand Oaks Police Department. He is also what is known as an intelligence-driven prosecutor. And what that means is, we understand that a handful of criminals commit a vast array of criminal offenses. And the intelligence-driven prosecution movement essentially says, we need to focus resources and attention and cross-jurisdictional resources on these habitual prolific offenders. Now, in the City of Thousand Oaks, that essentially means property-based criminals. Those who commit auto theft, who steal catalytic converters, who are responsible for break-ins of homes and commercial businesses, as well as automobiles, those who engage in identity theft, as well as possess burglary tools for all these purposes. And I am pleased to report to you that the community prosecutor, who is also the intelligent-driven prosecutor, is somebody who has made a significant impact in reducing recidivism in the City of Thousand Oaks. We identified about two and a half years ago 71 individuals who fell within the category of habitual recidivist offenders. And I'm pleased to share with you that over the last two years, there has been a 61% reduction in new arrests of these individuals. Some of them are simply incapacitated through custodial sanction such as incarceration. Others may be on strict grants in terms of probation, which serve to inhibit their criminal behavior. Others frankly may have just moved on to other areas, understanding that they are being targeted and looked at very closely in the City of Thousand Oaks, thanks to the collaboration between our department, Chief Freihoff, Sheriff AU, and all of you. So I want to begin by saying thank you. This is a community prosecution program that is indeed working. I also want to share with you a couple opportunities that are very important to me. I mentioned at the outset that I believe deeply in community engagement. I have asked all my deputy district attorneys to look towards all of the communities in our county through that lens. And what I mean by that is, I've created essentially a speakers bureau where deputy district attorneys can go out and speak to roaderies, other civic and service organizations, schools, law enforcement partners, chambers of commerce. So if you know of an opportunity that you would like to have a deputy DA involved in to speak in their official capacity to a group, please let my chief deputy Mike Jump know, who's on this call with me. I also want to share with you some very specific information about our Family Justice Center. Many of you know that Supervisor Parks was instrumental along with others in helping to create a one-stop shop for victims throughout our county. It's here in the City of Ventura, but it serves victims from throughout Ventura County. I asked Chief Deputy Jump to run some statistics. In the year 2020, 150 residents from the City of Thousand Oaks, which includes Newberry Park, obviously, and portions of Westlake Village, visited the Family Justice Center. And the bulk of them visited the Family Justice Center to seek guidance and assistance in domestic violence restraining orders. They wanted our help to restrain an individual who was a threat to them, either physically or verbally, or perhaps both. So through the Family Justice Center, these constituents of yours, they are able to go ahead and work with an advocate, and in many cases, an attorney, who will help them craft the language that the court will need to look at and comprehend to issue electronically that domestic violence restraining order. And they not only are able to receive assistance on being protected through this mechanism, but they're also able to go to the Family Justice Center and receive assistance in family law matters such as guardianship, child custody disputes, and marital dissolution, things of the like. And then I also want to share with you, one of my commitments is reforming our mental health system. We will soon unveil a dedicated mental health unit here in the District Attorney's Office. I have asked my chief deputies to develop an internal framework and policy that will guide our mental health prosecutions. But in the meantime, we have sponsored a team, a district attorney team, for the NAMI Walk, which is coming up on May 22 of this year. And I encourage the City of Thousand Oaks, as well as all municipal governments, to do the same. This is a great opportunity to de-stigmatize mental illness, to bring attention to the need to fund assistance programs, treatment, that provide services to the mentally ill. And also, it's just a way that we can go ahead and de-stigmatize and really show that this is a vulnerable population who really require sensitive psychiatric counseling, case management, and treatment. Lastly, as you know, there have been a rash of catalytic converter thefts, not just in Thousand Oaks, but throughout Southern California. And there was one that was featured in the Ventura County Star over the weekend. You may have read about this. Several individuals from out of county were detained. I wanted to report to you that one of our felony deputy district attorneys has indeed filed criminal charges against one of the individuals. This is felony charges for both theft as well as vandalism. The amount of money that it costs the automobile owner to restore the catalytic converter, $2,000 to $3,000, is just astronomical. So this is something that we take very seriously, as does Chief Freihoff and the Thousand Oaks Police Department. And it's something that we'll continue to monitor and prosecute aggressively, because it is an issue that we're seeing both in Thousand Oaks and elsewhere. And then lastly, I want to just shout out a strong show of support to save passages. I speak to former Chief Tim Hagel. I hear about the great work it's doing on behalf of reducing young individuals who may be tempted to join street gangs. It's providing not only food and homework, it's also providing hope. So that is a program that I'm very interested in supporting here on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. Mayor and Mayor Protem, I want to thank you very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. If this is not the appropriate time, please feel free to send them to me by email.
Thank you so much. That was a wonderful overview of the services provided by the district attorney. Also a wonderful way to introduce yourself so that the Thousand Oaks residents can see who the district attorney is. So I appreciate very much so far what you have pledged to do, especially in terms of mental health. Super important, especially since we are fighting homelessness. And of course, mental illness is about a lot more than homelessness. But glad to see that that is something that you're taking on. Your email will be provided to our council members for further questions if they wish to contact you. So again, congratulations to your appointment, and hopefully we'll see you or one of your deputies pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's been a pleasure to speak in front of you this evening. Thank you.
And with that, we come to my favorite part of the city council meeting, where I recognize individuals who have worked tirelessly behind the scenes with very little recognition, especially during the pandemic. And tonight, I am recognizing a married couple. They are Callie Delgado and Amy Cardenas. And they helped set up and helped to run the Adelante Comunidad Conejo Food Pantry at the Shadows Apartment here in Thousand Oaks. They were dealt lemons, and what did they do? They made lemonade. And here you are. You can see for yourself.
Hi, I'm Claudia Bill De La Peña, Mayor for the City of Thousand Oaks. And today, it is my pleasure to present to you the honorees of our monthly Community Commitment Award. And they are Callie Delgado and Amy Cardenas. They are married couples, immigrants from Ecuador. And they live here in Thousand Oaks. And the reason why they are being honored with this special award is because of the profound difference they are making in our community. The Community Commitment Award really honors people who are volunteers, extraordinary volunteers, who are working behind the scenes with little recognition, yet make a big impact. And Amy and Callie are rays of light in our community. And so here you are with this certificate of recognition that I'm presenting to you on behalf of the Thousand Oaks Council along with this award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Here you go. Callie and Amy, tell our community what prompted you to become critical what prompted you to become critical volunteers for a fairly new nonprofit organization here in Thousand Oaks named Adelante Comunidad Conejo.
Well, when the pandemic started, we saw a big need. People just were out of work, didn't have food, they couldn't pay the rent. And Lilian, the president of Adelante, contacted us and asked us if we could help out, give you the space. My boss said, of course, you can use this space here. And it started out small, and it started growing, growing, and growing.
You started out with just a few families maybe, but yet now you've grown to about 100 families, more than 300 people whom you feed and whom you supply with household products, not once a week, but twice a week. Tell us more about that.
We have people that come Wednesdays and Fridays from 5:30 to 7:30, and between 45 to 60 a day, each one of those days. About 80% of the people that we give food to each week is from outside of the neighborhood. We've been told by some of the people that they haven't had to go shopping anymore. They just eat the food that's here. And it's been great because they haven't worked for months, or almost a year.
Amy and Callie, how does it make you feel personally to be able to help someone in need?
It's fulfilling, I gotta say. Really like to see people, when they give you thanks for what we're doing here. The kids that come in here, they leave smiling because we give them a little candy or a little present whenever we have something. Yeah, it's like, I can't believe how fortunate we are to live in this country where people are so willing to help others.
Now, you're helping someone who is going home, who is gonna be able to eat, who's going to be able to have household products. That must make you feel really happy. Is that something that you want to continue to do after the pandemic is over?
Yes, probably, maybe not here, but somewhere else. Back in our country in Ecuador, there's a huge need for this kind of stuff. We wish you could do it over there, but at least we could do something for people here.
Wonderful. Is there anything else that you would like to add that I haven't touched upon?
Just want to thank Adelante for this opportunity to do this. My boss for giving us the chance to do this, Mike Ortiz from Westpac Management. And my wife, who does all the work, I just help her out.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations once again.
Amy and Callie, I want to tell you that we are so proud of you. You are Adelante heroes. You worked so many hours in this food pantry that we put together during the last year when COVID-19 started. And you gave us your community room so we can start this. And I remember when you told me that you wouldn't like say no to anyone, that this place is for everyone, everyone to come. You really love to help out. You are not looking for a recognition. But we, Adelante, board members and directors, are really happy that you're getting this recognition because you deserve it. You are the ones organizing all this food and having the volunteers in here. And it is a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lilian. If you know someone who is an outstanding volunteer and who is doing everything so quietly and behind the scenes, please nominate him, her, or them, and go to www.toaks.org/CCA. Until next time.
And we have Callie and Amy with us this evening. Let me see if they are already here. Do we see them?
We're here.
You are? Okay, great. There you are. Excellent. Congratulations. So how has it been going since we did the interview?
Since we did the interview.
I think we need to turn off something because of the feedback.
Oh, hold on. Sorry about that.
No problem. So how has it been going?
I don't know what's happening, sorry.
We can hear you.
I'm so bad with technology.
We can hear you. Your microphone is on.
Did Dad handle it?
Yes, we can hear you.
No, sorry.
Okay. Well, we were going to thank you and get...
Let me just say, thank you so much for the award. We feel really, really, really happy for it and proud to be able to help people.
Excellent.
Sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
That's quite all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much again for continuing to help our community during this difficult time. All right. Take good care, Callie and Amy. All right. And with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Please remain muted until the mayor calls your name. If you need Spanish translation or would like to speak in Spanish, please call 805-449-2152. Si necesita tu atención al español o le gustaría hablar en español, por favor llame al 805-449-2152. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Four individuals have requested to speak. In pursuit to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes and six minutes for speakers requesting translation services.
Thank you very much. And our first speaker is a very familiar face, a face that we like to see all the time, former police chief Tim Hagel. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. I was gonna just start right in real quick and welcome our new district attorney, who I've had the opportunity to work with for years. But Mayor, I just watched your program on Adelante, and I got goosebumps right now on me. Adelante is such an amazing organization. And the storyline that you just gave really says what's going on in the Conejo about people who care. As such, you know, there are two important players to make sure we maintain our social equity. And that's not the nonprofits like Adelante and others. That is our district attorney and police chief. And that's really what I'm here to talk about tonight. You got a dynamic duo here. I've known both of these individuals for their entire careers. And they represent social equity, our safety. Our new district attorney can decide what's affected policy and debates and legislator outcomes and regarding the criminal justice system and our day-to-day safety. Our new district attorney is a stand-up guy. He's got his finger on the pulse to keep us safe in the Conejo. Yeah, he's a district attorney, but more than that, he understands the needs of the Conejo community. He places his lead chief attorneys, attorneys like Mike Jump that many of you remember, held our hands as a community through the borderline incident. He places all of these lead chief attorneys in a niche that fits them best. They're in the positions of community, youth justice, and most of all, safety. So every one of us are safe in our community. And I just wanted to give a big shout out and welcome him the Conejo way. And the combination of him and Chief Freihoff is just gonna be incredible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I like how you dubbed them, the chief and the district attorney, the dynamic duo. It wasn't too long ago that Chief Freihoff and you were the dynamic duo. All right. Next speaker is Cindy Liu, followed by Betsy Connolly, and then Shane. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, my name is Cindy Liu. Live in unincorporated Newbury Park. And I'm speaking tonight in honor of my daughter and World Down Syndrome Day, which is on March 21st. For those who may not know, Down Syndrome occurs when an individual has an extra copy of the 24th chromosome, hence 321, March 21 for World Down Syndrome Day. Our daughter is a genetic overachiever. She's like an X-Men, and I'm pretty sure one of her superpowers is her ability to ignore her mom when I ask her to straighten up her room. It is with her in mind that I am so invested in the future of our wonderful city and our plan for the next 25 years. It's why I started the grassroots organization called We Belong 805. By 2045, my daughter will be 33, the start of following her dreams, prime time to cultivate her career, her relationships, and for her to contribute to the community. We can't lock her out of that American dream, a shared human desire, because it belongs to her too. I've been reflecting a lot on the word equity, excuse me, and what does it really mean? Equity is access to the system and representation within the system. I see and applaud the intentional efforts towards access our city staff have made, closed captioning, Spanish translation, and direct outreach to shareholder groups. I thank you and encourage you to keep going. When it comes to representation within the system, well, we need to do some work here. And looking at our city's commissions and advisory boards, I was excited to see that there is one for disability until I read the charter. The Disability Access Appeals and Advisory Board, DAB as it's known, was enacted in 2005, and the last recorded minutes were from January 2018, more than three years ago. Shockingly, the purpose of the DAB was to consider requests for exemptions to building codes, codes that were designed to increase access to people with disabilities as part of the ADA, like the number of required handicap parking spots and accessible restrooms. Can you imagine if such a board was recreated with regards to policies on race? Disability rights are civil rights, and I'm asking that the council recognize the urgent need to have an active disability commission or advisory board that focuses on the inclusion, equity, and belonging of people with disabilities so we can help our city actualize our stated values of, quote, "offering a high quality of life that is accessible to all," end quote. We Belong 805 has been collaborating with experts at the Independent Living Resource Center and the Tarjan Center at UCLA. And we'd be happy to submit a proposal for the new commission and to continue to work with city staff. And we respectfully request, within three months, that the council agendize as a discussion item through new review, a new charter for new disability advisory commission. I'm encouraged that our council has stated these values and hopeful that we will commit resources to bring those values to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Betsy Connolly, followed by Shane. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am here in the capacity of volunteer coordinator for Adelante Comunidad Conejo. And I want to offer my congratulations and thanks from the many volunteers who partner with Callie and Amy. When Adelante stepped up to help families get lunches for their children back in March a year ago, we were introduced to Amy and Callie, who manage Shadows Apartments. And they offered to help us. As our effort grew, and it did grow, they made arrangements for us to use their closed community room as a food pantry, as they shared in the film clip. We never imagined a year ago that Adelante, with Amy and Callie's help, would be serving hundreds of families every week. And at each step of the way, as smaller became bigger, Amy and Callie have always said yes. The Shadows pantry is stocked by our Adelante community volunteers, and we depend on local businesses, nonprofit organizations, schools, clubs, churches, and individual donors to make this effort possible. But it's Callie and Amy that make the twice-a-week pantry operation possible. They are the heart, welcoming families who need a helping hand, organizing an abundance of food, inviting others to join them. They have a whole group of community volunteers that they have recruited to help them on pantry nights. And that is why this effort is such a success. I just want to say how grateful I am to know them and to bear witness to the amazing work that is happening here in our own community. And to thank you, city council, for recognizing their service and the service of others with the Community Commitment Award. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, and a good night to you as well. Our last public speaker is Shane Kay. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. Recently, the council has used an interpretation of both Measure E and I think SB 330 to push for a 70% increase in market rate housing development, mainly along T.O. Boulevard and areas of high employment in the city. Other cities, notably Seattle and Boston, have tried to solve their affordability problems with a similar development pattern. But both of those cities remain unaffordable. Instead, they have suffered from increases in traffic, an increase in housing costs, and large-scale displacement via gentrification. Under any of the general plan updates proposed, I think it is reasonable to predict that Thousand Oaks will suffer the same fate. For this reason, the council should pursue alternatives. For example, state law allows for the development of an ADU and JADU on every single-family home lot. Could these units be applied to the 30,000 units that must be planned for under Measure E? Furthermore, I think the council should explore plans and interpretations of both Measure E and SB 330 that comply with the requirements under the Regional Housing Needs Assessment without forcing more high-rent development on a city that might not be able to accommodate it and making the case for this interpretation, perhaps in court if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we go to item number seven. That is the consent calendar. Are there any items my colleagues wish to pull? None?
Didn't the city manager have a follow-up to the public comments?
Oh, yes, thank you for the reminder. Mr. Powers, do you have anything to say?
Hi there, yes. Madam Mayor, no major follow-up items, only that obviously the purview of various commissions are certainly a topic that's within the council's jurisdiction. And so as far as the Disabled Access Board, that certainly is within the council's jurisdiction. And we'd be happy to talk more about that down the road should the council have questions. And obviously, we're in the middle of a general plan update where a lot of dialogue is happening around housing. And that's consistent with comments made by our final speaker.
Thank you. All right. And now we go to item number seven. Any items, any thing that my colleagues want to discuss? If not, then I will look for a motion.
I'll show them.
I heard, I think Mr. Adam was first, Mayor Pro Tem. Sorry. All right.
It was close.
Yeah, it was very close. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Angler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Penya?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We don't have any public hearings tonight. However, we do have a study session, and that is on environmental justice and equity, a new element of our soon-to-be-approved general plan. It's a first in the history of Thousand Oaks. And the reason being that it is, now that we're updating our general plan, it is required by the state. With that, I will go back to our city manager, Drew Powers, for the introduction.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to offer a couple of thoughts at the outset of tonight's discussion to frame the issue. As you mentioned, this is a new element that all cities that are doing a comprehensive update of their general plan will have to tackle. And this really is the benefit of going through a comprehensive general plan update. So much focus and attention has been on our land use element in recent months, rightfully so. But there are many elements that comprise the general plan. And so being able to have study sessions and discussions and stakeholder workshops on topics that range from economic development and cultural affairs to sustainability, and tonight's discussion on environmental justice and social equity, really afford the community a chance to have a dialogue that perhaps wouldn't normally be occurring under the normal course of business. And so just want to remind the council, yet another benefit of the comprehensive general plan update, this is a blueprint for our community for the next several decades. And it's an important opportunity to have conversations about all aspects of society here in Thousand Oaks. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ingrid Hardy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm just going to share my screen. My apologies. I practiced this, but...
Well, you're doing better than I did with screen sharing.
I need to start the presentation is the problem, so let me do that first. And I am still struggling here, so I apologize. What you're going to see is just the outline of the presentation because I am having some technical issues here.
That will be okay.
Okay. And by that, I mean user error. So not technical issues, user error. Here we go. So as you mentioned, this is a study session tonight on health, equity, and environmental justice. As you are aware, city council and staff have been engaged in numerous conversations with community members and organizations regarding requests for the city to address diversity, equity, and inclusion. A few examples of those requests include a request to adopt a resolution on equity and inclusion. We've received requests in which we've responded to to provide translation and interpretation on written materials as well as for our city council meetings. And we've also responded to the request to provide closed captioning for city meetings. Considering the city is in the midst of a general plan update, and the environmental justice element addresses health and equity, there is an opportunity to discuss equity and inclusion more globally through this existing process, which will help inform general plan policies. Tonight, Matt Ramey of Ramey and Associates will provide the council with a background on health and equity and environmental justice, the existing conditions in Thousand Oaks, a summary of the engagement on this very topic, including last year's meeting with the General Plan Advisory Committee, as well as feedback from a stakeholder focus group that was held last week. He will also share examples with the city council on how other communities have addressed equity, health, and environmental justice through general plans and related efforts. But before we get to Matt's presentation, I would like to talk to the council about how we are addressing diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging within the organization. This includes workforce demographic data, employee learning and development, as well as some of the opportunities and challenges. You may recall in June of last year that the staff presented to the city council an organizational initiative entitled Moving TO, which is short for Moving Toward the Future: New Processes and Fresh Paths. Workplace transformation is one of the three focus areas for this initiative. The objective under this focus area is the continual transformation of the organization and its culture with an emphasis on employee attraction, retention, engagement, development, and sustainable long-term operational efficiencies. Considering Thousand Oaks has a reputation of being an employer of choice, we endeavor to evolve and improve so that we are not only retaining the awesome talent we currently have within the organization, but that we are able to attract the best and brightest to Thousand Oaks. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to our HR Director, Tim Giles, who will provide the city council with more specifics on our internal efforts. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to present to you this information on our staff. Too often, your interaction, the public's interaction with our staff is one at a time, and routinely, we hear about what great interaction they have with our staff one at a time, but it lacks that understanding of how our staff in total is really performing and what they're doing. So I'd like to turn the spotlight just briefly on to the city and talk a little bit in terms of what the diversity of the makeup of our staff is. With gender diversity, our staff is 44% female, which the California workforce is comprised of 45% females. So we track exactly with the statewide numbers on gender diversity within the workplace. Taking that a step deeper, we look at ethnic diversity within our workforce. For the city, our workforce is made up of 58% white employees, 28% Hispanic, 10% Asian, 2% Black or African-American. When we compare that to our community, the demographics that we have for the city of Thousand Oaks, we see that the minority community is well-represented in our workforce. Whereas the community is approximately 17% Hispanic, it's 28% within the city workforce. 9% Asian within the community and 10% within the workforce. Black and African-American, from one to two within the workforce. All of these metrics just go to show that the city is very open to hiring diverse candidates. The focus is really on bringing in the best candidate without regard to whatever background they may bring. And it's always a good thing for us to be able to say that our workforce really reflects the diversity and richness of our community. We seek that diversity because the differences in backgrounds and experiences and history, cultures, when that is brought in, we're able to come up with better and more comprehensive recommendations and solutions for the community. So we really, we really value that as we put our workforce together. Now, having said that, we're not ready to stop with those numbers that we have there. We recognize that there are challenges. There are opportunities where we can improve. As we dive down into these diversities, we can see that we want to achieve those same or similar types of diversity at all levels within the organization so that, whether you're talking about the highest levels of the organization or the entry-level positions and the maintenance workers and those things, that you see a rich diversity in all of those positions so that we can achieve that. Also, across divisions and departments, we want to see that kind of diversity achieved. As we are able to bring that diversity of thoughts into each of our work units, we believe that it will improve the services that we provide to our community. Now, as we, as we look at opportunities to improve, we start with our recruiting efforts. As Ingrid mentioned, one of the things that we really do is we seek to to bring in a really diverse but high-quality candidate pool. We're really looking to maintain the best qualified candidates that we can within our staff workforce. And one of the ways that we can attract high-quality candidates is based upon the reputation that the city has. And the city is known for its diversity. The city is known for a number of really positive aspects which make it a favorable place to work. We want to emphasize that so that, so that we are able to attract good candidates and people recognize us as a diverse and inclusive workplace that they would want to work. But even having said that, we also look to our current approaches to recruitment and realize that we have opportunities where we can eliminate unconscious bias. And we're looking at techniques that we would be using to, to help the hiring managers develop a more robust and broader cool pool of candidates from which to choose from. Also, we'll be training our hiring managers to focus in on the cultural fit to complement technical competence. We have seen the situation where you can bring in the person who knows and understands how to do the job best, but if they don't fit in the culture, you end up with, with a detrimental situation that you have to deal with. So we want, we want to really focus in on, on having a culture that, that values the inclusion and values the participation as well as having technical competence. Now, one of the main things that we do in doing this, Ingrid also touched on this just briefly, is our focus then on our employee development, not just the recruitment of who we bring in, but how we work with the employees that we have to give them the tools so that they can develop in all aspects of their job. The communications is a focus of their performance. We really focus in on supervisors who will communicate with employees, employees who are open to communicate with coworkers and supervisors. It's that communication that allows a diverse workforce to be able to contribute in a meaningful way. If that communication is not there, employees don't know what they're doing that, that could help them get ahead or what, what things that they have left out. But with that communication, we focus in on ways that employees can be more successful in the organization and identify opportunities for advancement within the organization. We focus and devote substantial resources to technical skills developments. We're often looking for outside courses to help our employees to develop skills, not only in the jobs they have, but to develop a higher level of education to make them qualified for higher-level positions within the organization. We're also constantly looking for opportunities where an employee can, can reach above their current job assignment and for a period of time, do a stretch assignment, be able to do another person's job and learn those skills, become more valuable to the organization, be able to, to be more ready to step in when those opportunities arise. And then, within the last year, we have launched a program within the city. It's iEvolve Thousand Oaks. That's a comprehensive training platform. We're really focused in on e-learning. These are video courses that are available to the employees at their desk, at home, on their cell phones, on their time, as well as developmental opportunities onsite. There's over 12,000 video courses that are available to our employees that, that they can develop their skills or fill any gaps that they may have based upon their needs and what they have identified, as well as what their supervisors might suggest for them. Over the last year, we, and we rolled this out just a little less than a year ago, in that time, over 12,800 of these courses have been viewed by our employees. They are taking that opportunity to, to use this platform to assist them in developing their skills, and again, making them, making themselves more valuable to the organization and creating better opportunities for them to advance within the organization. So we focus in on that to really talk about diversity, but that's only half of the story. That's just telling us a status point of where we are. Our focus really goes the next step, and, and what we really focus in is the idea of inclusion. Not just do we have a diverse workforce, but is that diverse workforce brought into so that we can reap the benefits of, of that diversity, of the differences in perspective and approach that they can bring. One of the things that is in our formal policy for the city of Thousand Oaks employees is that all employees are to be treated with respect, which is a great goal, and it almost goes without saying. But it's a hard one to, to really enforce as a policy statement. When we look at the, the history of the culture within the city of Thousand Oaks staff, we have always seen a strong team mentality. The city team works together. They're always pulling together and pulling for each other. And that's a great and valuable point to have. It shows that respect is there. Now, what we have witnessed over this last year is some challenges with respect to this. We've seen the societal divisiveness that, that we all watch on the news or see in, in society around us. We, we look at the pandemic response and how it has, it has put undue burden on employees as well as the rest of our community. And as people have dealt with these unprecedented challenges over the past year, we have seen that, that there has been a noticeable wane in that team mentality that we're used to. So we're focusing really on developing a culture where we get back to making it natural for all employees to feel like they belong in the city of Thousand Oaks, that they are valued individually for their role, they're respected for what they bring, the contributions they make to the organization, and each and every one of them is encouraged to contribute. And we think that's a goal that's very achievable, and, and I think is the ultimate goal of a diversity and inclusion program, is really to, to develop that sense among the employees that they belong and they can contribute. So we're doing several things with that. We do training opportunities with our state-mandated harassment prevention training that we rolled out last year. We used our iEvolve platform, and it allowed us to adopt a progressive curriculum addressing bias prevention on a wide range of sensitive topics, including race and gender identity. In all of the trainings that I have seen over my years working with municipalities, I have never seen one, a program, a curriculum that has addressed diversity and inclusion as well as that program did. It really gave an eye-opening opportunity for our employees to see things that they hadn't seen other, in other opportunities and other times. But we're not stopping there with mandatory training. We're really working behind the scenes as well to influence the culture development. We're reinforcing inclusive practices. We're recruiting with that fit for the culture of inclusion. And with all of these kinds of things, working with the supervisors, working with the employees, working with everybody at all levels in a, not in a mandatory way, but in an influencing way, we're, we feel comfortable that that culture of belonging is going to be a hallmark for the city of Thousand Oaks staff that's going to be well-recognized and it's going to be well-sought after by high-quality candidates that are, that are looking to work for a municipal government. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to, to Ingrid Hardy to, to introduce our next speaker. But I will be around to answer any questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Tim. To city council, at this time, I'll stop sharing my screen, and I am going to turn the presentation over to Matt Ramey of Ramey and Associates.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It's nice to see you all again. You all can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We don't see you, but we can hear you.
Really? All right. I'm going to share my screen. I need to be enabled to share the screen. If I could get that from staff, that would be, that would be great. I, this evening, am going to give a brief presentation on environmental justice and equity. What I'm going to do is really provide you with information. I'm going to give you some of the information that, that I know, information that we have heard throughout the process. We're really not necessarily looking for any specific feedback at this time, but we are, we are just hoping to sort of raise the level of awareness and understanding as part of our general plan update process. I am going to need to share my screen, so Melissa or... I am going to need to share my screen, so Melissa or other staff, if I could get enabled to do that, that would be great. And then, I'll be able to move on in the presentation. Apologies. There we go. All right. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, now we do.
Great, thank you. Okay. What I'm going to do, what I want to start with is the February 23 proclamation that you all had, Madam Mayor, that you read, which was really wonderful. I just want to give a quote from that, which was, "We invite all members of our community to renew their commitment to ensuring racial equity, understanding, and justice, and to participate in activities designed to advance the cause of freedom and equality." So, that was the proclamation. I think it really is a perfect framing for the session that we have this evening because that is really what we're talking about. We're talking about racial equity and we're talking about environmental justice. I'm going to start with really what is the academic and historical aspect of the presentation to try and define some terms and give some background on the topic. So, I'm going to start with the big picture of what is a healthy and equitable community? This is a term that has really come about in the last 10 years or so, and essentially it is a term to define overall broadly, an environment, a physical environment, a social environment, and a psychological environment that provides healthy access for all. It includes a whole range of topics which essentially mirror all of the topics of the general plan, including access to healthy foods, transportation, access to parks, public safety, and housing. But it also includes other topics such as social support and cohesion, access to health services, and then education and economic and job opportunities. An important term when thinking about health, environmental justice, and equity is to understand what it is that causes people to be healthy or unhealthy. There's a term that is used in the health profession called the social determinants of health. What we have found is that there are many factors that go into a person's health and well-being. We a lot of times think about health as disease and injury, and these are called the downstream effects. And of course, mortality and life expectancy are sort of the ultimate downstream effect. If you are not alive, you are clearly not healthy. So, the step up from that is disease and injury. And we know that there's a lot of risk behaviors that feed into whether someone is healthy or not, whether you smoke, whether you're active, how much you drink. There are, what we also know is that the physical-built environment in which we are in has an impact on a person's health. So, we know that if you live in an area where there is environmental pollution nearby, that you're more likely to not live as healthy a life. But when we start looking upstream from this, what we find is that there are institutions and social inequities that also impact a person's health and overall well-being. And these are called, these are the upstream factors, and we're going to be talking about some of these tonight in terms of race, ethnicity, and income. One of the other terms is environmental justice. In 2016, the state passed Senate Bill 1000, which was the Planning for Healthy Communities Act, also known as the Environmental Justice Element. And this supports jurisdictions to be able to integrate environmental justice into their general plans. Environmental justice elements have looked at more than just environmental justice. They look at health much more broadly. California defines environmental justice as "the fair treatment of people of all races, cultures, and incomes with respect to the development, adoption, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies." When environmental justice, the term really started, it really refers to when there is a polluting source next to a lower-income community or a minority community. However, for SB 1000, that definition has really been expanded, not only to include environmental pollution, but also to look at health disparities, healthy housing, physical activity, and access to healthy foods. So, where does this come from and what's the historical context? Well, first, it's important to understand that the planning profession actually started as a response to public health in cities. It was to separate noxious uses, factories, from homes. We see that, you see that in the 1850s to the 1900s, where there's overcrowding in cities. This led to disease and it actually led to the creation of the planning profession and zoning. And so, it then also continued on into the 1960s with the California farmworker movement and then in the 1980s in particular, when there was a lot of information that came about in terms of how planning practice and was locating noxious uses, businesses, and industries in lower-income communities, and there were very severe disproportionate health impacts. If you know about Cancer Alley in the South, that's just one example. So, this is part of the context in which we are, in which this was occurring. And more locally, there was the Lancer Incinerator protests in South Central Los Angeles. Bringing it a little bit closer to the present day, we really are looking a lot more at equity. And as we saw this past summer, the demonstrations against police violence occurred all across the country and even here in Thousand Oaks. And these are some images of some of the protests that happened in Thousand Oaks to encourage less police violence. An important term is equity, and I want to differentiate equity from equality. Equality is where everyone gets the same amount. Equity is where everyone is provided with what they need so that everybody ultimately is at the same level. You can see this on the graphic on the right. What we know is that socioeconomic and environmental factors have an impact on a person's health and a person's well-being. And equity is when those socioeconomic and environmental factors can no longer be used to predict life outcomes and outcomes for all, and outcomes for all groups are improved. We do know that some of the socioeconomic and environmental factors that impact a person's health and well-being are race, gender, income, the place that they live, and overall educational attainment. And then, we get into a more difficult term and a more difficult conversation, which is racism. And I want to highlight two aspects of racism that we actually deal with in the planning world, and that's institutional racism and structural racism. Institutional racism is essentially when an institution, whether knowingly or unknowingly, has discriminatory treatment or unfair practices and inequitable opportunities. And this is when the institution maintains those practices. Again, a lot of times, it's sort of not really known that that's what you're doing, that's what institutions are doing, but it is something that advantages one group over another or disadvantages one group over another. Structural racism is when those institutions are working together with one another to generate and reinforce the racial inequities. And structural racism normalizes and reinforces these dynamics that exist in society. And we do know that both institutional and structural racism do exist in our societies. Unfortunately, I have to say that racism and race-based decisions have very much been part of the planning profession for a very long time. This is sort of the academic part of what I'm going to talk about, and I want to just bring up a couple of terms just to provide some historical context. So, one of the most common ways that we know about that racism has happened was when there was redlining. And that's when there was restrictions on lending that targeted black communities. So, very clearly, you can see maps, and in fact, the lending institutions drew maps of areas where they were not going to lend, and those lending practices were based partially on income, but also on race. And the implications of that in many, many cities across the country are still being felt, including in the greater Los Angeles area. We then have redevelopment. And redevelopment was, of course, a great tool that California used and many cities across the country used. However, those decisions were really based somewhat on when neighborhoods were changed, when there was new development happening. It was disproportionately impacting communities of color and lower-income communities. Then, of course, along with redevelopment and others, there's the siting of waste facilities and other polluting infrastructure in minority and low-income communities. And again, think about Cancer Alley in the South, where all of the factories were placed in the lower-income areas of the state. One of the more recently discovered and discussed aspects of racism in planning is dealing with zoning, which is based on income, which because income and race, ethnicity are so strongly correlated, that zoning in effect has become a method of racial segregation. There are lots of studies that have talked about this. There's one quote here, which says, "The further separation of detached, single-family homes through minimum lot-size requirements separates owners by wealth. In short, low-density zoning excludes low-income and minority residents." There are two other aspects here. One is that many communities and many cities across the country, edge cities formed after the race riots in inner cities in the 1960s. And so, you see suburban communities formed all across the country, which are in a sense in response to those race riots. And then, you have the fiscalization of land use, where some of the businesses, a lot of the businesses followed the residents out of the core, the central business districts, and into the suburban areas. And what that did was that left concentrations of poverty without any tax revenues for those areas. So, we ended up with these cycles of poverty and cycles of exclusion in certain areas. I'm going to talk quickly about existing conditions and then move into the community engagement that we have heard so far. I want to start just with what is the environmental justice element? And again, this is a new element. It's the newest element that is part of the general plan process. And if a community is updating two or more of its elements, you're required to look at whether you should be including a environmental justice element in your general plan. There are essentially three steps to creating the environmental justice element. The first is the identification of what is termed disadvantaged communities or communities of concern. That is an analysis of existing conditions based on a variety of factors, and I'll go through some of those factors in just a minute. The second step is, once you've identified what those potential disadvantaged communities are, you work with members of the community to both confirm whether those are actually disadvantaged areas or to identify other areas of disadvantage. And then, finally, you integrate goals, policies, and programs to address the priorities identified in the disadvantaged communities. The topics that you need to look at are pollution exposure, access to public facilities, safe and sanitary homes, physical activity, and then any other identified health risks or burdens, including things such as food access. One point that I want to make here with this is that while the state really does identify and really try to focus the environmental justice element on specific areas of the community that are disadvantaged, in our work, we look not just at those disadvantaged areas, but we look overall at health conditions. So, for example, if you're a low-income area and you're next to a freeway, you might be a disadvantaged community, but even if you're a high-income area, you're still suffering from health risks, and therefore, we believe it's important that you address it in the general plan. There are a couple of methods for determining whether there is a disadvantaged community. The first is a process called, an index called CALIN virus screen, which is straightforward. And the second is to combine low-income census tracts with some measure of disadvantage, so traffic density, groundwater, impaired water bodies, toxic waste sites, lack of access to services. You look at those together and you identify your disadvantaged areas. As part of the existing conditions work, we did a comprehensive analysis of health conditions in the community. And what we found overall is that Thousand Oaks is a very, very healthy community by many, many aspects. It's higher income, there's higher life expectancy than the state, the poverty rates really don't vary by race and ethnicity, which is great. There are lower obesity rates than the state. There are lower asthma and diabetes rates overall. There's very few polluting uses in the city. There's a significant amount of parks and open spaces, approximately 45% to 50% of the city, and there's relatively low crime rates. However, there are some areas of concern to look at. First is there are concentrations of lower-income residents, and I'll show that in just a minute. The second is that income in the city does vary by race, ethnicity. So, we do see patterns of lower-income populations, which are also the minority populations. There's lower educational attainment among Hispanic and Latinos. While obesity rates are lower, there still is adult obesity of over 20% in the city. So, again, just because you're better than the average in the state, it doesn't mean that there isn't room for improvement. Some households are experiencing a housing cost burden, which has certainly been discussed a lot in the general plan update process. There are higher rates of suicide and self-harm than the county in the area sort of northwest of the 23 and the 101 freeway. And there are, through all of this analysis, a few areas which we believe are considered disadvantaged communities within Thousand Oaks, and therefore, we have to look at in the general plan. I'm going to start with just, I'm going to go through just a few statistics here. The figure on the left shows age-adjusted emergency room rates due to diabetes. What you have on the bottom is the ZIP code, and then compared on the right to the county. And what you can see here is that for ER rates for diabetes, the city is doing very well. If you look at asthma, again, it's the same thing. The county is 29.6 per 1,000 for youth, for pediatric, and 13 for adults. But all across the board, you see that the city, the subareas of the city are actually doing really well compared to the county. So, that's great. Looking at race, ethnicity, this figure actually came up before in Tim's presentation. Thousand Oaks is 69% white and 17% Hispanic-Latino, and this is higher than the county as a whole. So, the percentage of white population is much higher and the Hispanic population is much lower. You can see on the map here where the Hispanic population is more concentrated. The, looking at income, as I mentioned previously, income is a strong social determinant of health, and it's linked to the ability to live in an area where there's high-quality education, access to healthcare, the ability to afford healthy foods, and the ability to pay for quality housing. So, overall, the average household income in the city is just over 105,000. And what you see here is income by race, ethnicity, and the Hispanic, Latino, of any race is below, significantly below, the average, and it's the lowest of any race, ethnicity in the city. When we look at median household income, the threshold that SB 1000 uses is either 80% of the state area of the state median income or 80% of the county median income. And you can see these numbers on the slides here. So, what we have, and you can start seeing some of these patterns of where the lower-income populations are in the city, which is really along the 101 freeway. But you can see that some of the census tracts here have much lower incomes, much lower average household incomes than other areas of the city. So, we're starting to see patterns develop about where the lower-income populations are in the city. And then, we look at how those incomes relate to other factors. And you can see that, again, in the red here, this is percent, housing cost burden percentile. So, what you see is the areas in red are in the top 25%, 25% worse in the state for housing cost burden. And then, the sort of the orangey-pink color is in the 50% to 75% range in the state. So, you see, there are some areas that are severely housing cost burden. And why is this important? And we've been discussing this in the general plan, and this is a slide that I believe has come up multiple times, is that the median household income is just over 100,000. But what that means is that there's a lot of people who could live, who are working in the city, who can't afford to live in the city. And just as an example here, so you have someone, retail salesperson or a fast-food clerk or a janitor who are making about 30,000. or a janitor who are making about thirty thousand dollars a year, and that's way below the, the median household income. And so including nurses, schoolteachers, paralegal firefighters, civil engineers, a lot of these folks are not at the median household income and thus are, are considered lower income in the city of Thousand Oaks. And so this connection between income and housing and health is really critical. Going back into some more of the, of the, the data here, the, the asthma rates, while overall in the city are really good, we do see some areas where there are some, some concentrations of higher asthma rates. And so the county average is thirteen per ten thousand, and you see here in the red, it's over thirty per ten thousand. So it's two and a half times the county rate in these areas. Then there's diabetes among adults. Again, overall, the city is doing really well, but what we're looking at here is in, the darker the red and the orange are, are more concentrations of where there are higher rates of diabetes. And you're starting to see some of the same geographies appear in some of these areas, which track very closely with income. And so where that's ended up is that we have identified several areas which are called disadvantaged communities or potential disadvantaged communities that we need to look at closer in the process. The final step, and the final piece that really that I'm going to dive into detail on is the community engagement process that we have embarked on so far, and that really revolves around two aspects. The first was a general plan advisory committee discussion in July of last year. We gave a relatively similar presentation to what we're doing tonight, although this is much more updated. They identified a number of issues in the community related to health and environmental justice, including housing, homelessness, transportation access to social services, access to quality healthcare, and improved infrastructure in disadvantaged communities. They also gave a number of suggestions of things to think about in the general plan, including more housing for people who work in the community, more apartment complexes to reduce the number of people commuting, rental apartments that are safe, clean, and healthy. There was concern that some of the apartments were not, didn't meet the, the high-quality standard for a healthy home. Improved transportation access to public services, more parks and open space, well-lit streets, and then approved, improved accessibility, including that ADA should be the minimum and not the maximum of what is, we're trying to achieve. And then last week, we had a really wonderful conversation with some really dedicated folks who are working or, and/or living in the city. And we spent a couple of hours just working together and thinking together about what are the issues and what are some of the ways to improve the, improve the health in the community. And, and I have to say that over the last month and a half, I've met with quite a number of community members, both through this and through the general plan process. And it really has been a pleasure to really get to know some of the people in the community a lot better. But we did hear both a reinforcement of some of what we had identified through the data, but also some different information as well. So one thing that came up that we, we didn't really get much through the data, mostly because it's not available, is that there are some issues of racial bias in the community, including with policing, banking, and real estate. It's not widespread, but, but it is out there. There is a significant exclusionary mindset in the city that made a lot of people who we talked to feel uncomfortable. There is limited housing for the majority of people who work in the city. And essentially, there's a lack of affordable housing, and there's overcrowding in the areas, particularly in the lower-income areas. And the image that I showed previously, the graph of the median income and then who can afford to live in the city, is, is a pretty telling graphic. As I showed in the data, there, the, the participants also said that there were concentrations of low-income populations. There is limited access for services, to services for those with disabilities. And there was a lot of conversation about both transit, lack of transit service across the city and being able to actually access the places that would be beneficial for people to go to, and then a lack of access to the internet and technology, especially for seniors low, and lower-income populations. This has come up previously as well, but there is limited culturally-appropriate outreach and information. And I know that even in the last month and a half, staff has made great strides in that. There was a feeling that there was not enough commitment to equity-focused and anti-racism work, and there's not adequate representation in city government. But it wasn't just a, a complaining session, and in fact, there were a lot of really great ideas that came up. Without going through all of the detail here, we've categorized these into a couple of, a couple of broad categories. So the first suggestion was that the city should have a commitment to equity. Some of the suggestions came up already about a committee or commission to address equity and inclusion, supporting anti-racist and anti-bias training among city staff, and making sure that there's more diversity in boards and commissions. There were some comments about access to healthy foods, and then a lot of comments about access, increased access to technology. And this came up quite a bit in terms of expanding and distributing, expanding the distribution of computers for low-income students and older adults, expanding broadband access, and building partnerships with school districts to make sure that everyone has access to the internet. Improved transit came up a lot, and we know this is a much more difficult one, particularly because of the development patterns in the city, which don't really support. It increased in significant transit service, but there were lots of stories about how difficult it is to get many places that you need to get to through transit. There was a desire to have more culturally-appropriate outreach and information. There was a request for more police accountability to make sure that they are held accountable for any unfair and racist behaviors. And then affordable housing came up a lot, and that's come up a lot, not just in the, the session that we had, the focus group on, on the equity and environmental justice, but also throughout the general plan process. There were, and just to report on this, there, there are lots of comments that came up throughout the work that we have been doing, which are, I just wanted to share with you because they, they do highlight that there are some exclusionary practices and I, not practices, but exclusionary sentiments that are happening in the city. And so, and that there's a, a fear of people of other incomes, which is equated sometimes with just income and sometimes equated with race, about, about changes to the city. So the first, you know, traffic, crime, and lower property values and quality of life will be the result if this mixed-use development is allowed. Why is Thousand Oaks driving property owners out by creating low-income housing for people without jobs or incomes? I speak to my, I speak to my similarly educated and high-earning friends, and they all want to leave as well if additional housing is created specifically low-income and high-density. A couple of apartment complexes built in less desirable areas on a gradual basis would be a more intelligent way to go. Include, so this is essentially taking the, the, the poor population and moving them to the edge so that they're not part of the community. And then in terms of who should have a say in the process, what a renter or a college student has to say about the general plan should not carry as much weight as the tax-paying property owners. Again, these are just highlighting just a few of the comments that we did here, which were, which were negative, and there were a lot of positive comments as well. But these were some of the negative comments that came about through the process, which highlight some of the challenges of trying to achieve equity and inclusion in the city. Moving into best practices, there's really three ways that we can address equity and environmental justice in the general plan. One is procedural, so making sure the process, the procedures are, are fair. The second is distributional, to make sure that resources and benefits and burdens are fairly distributed. And then the third is structural, which is to make a commitment to past harms and prevent any future unintended consequences of decisions. There's a huge body of work out there and for what cities have been doing with health and environmental justice. While the environmental justice element was a requirement in 2016, there have been health elements and health and wellness elements and equity elements that have been included in general plans for a really long time, that have been addressing a lot of the concerns that we're both seeing in the city and then more broadly. And there's just a couple of examples here of what has been included in environmental justice elements. But then, of course, equity and health really is part of the entire general plan, as I mentioned in the definition of what is a healthy community, which was the first slide in the presentation. So other ways that you can deal with some of the concerns are in the housing element for market feasible multifamily housing. There was identity, identification of the need for an inclusionary housing ordinance, incentives for affordable housing, and eliminating exclusionary zoning practices with transportation, improved access to goods and services, and also making the community more walkable because it's, and bikeable because it's more healthy. Improved access to public facilities and services, including internet. And then governance, which came up previously in terms of diversity and hiring, equal access to government for all. And a recommendation that many communities are doing to participate in the, the government Alliance on Race and Equity, or GARE, which is a training program that, that communities can do. I'm going to end here. Again, I know, I apologize, this was a lot of information. It's a pretty deep topic that goes across lots of, lots of different factors that impact the general plan and the community. I want to just, to maybe start it out, and Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to you in just a second, but, you know, I think we'd like to get some feedback, you know, overall as we're, as we're building the general plan, on what are some of the critical health, equity, and environmental justice issues that you see? What types of goals and policies could be included in the general plan to address health inequity? And then overall, what other steps can the city take to address equity and health issues? Again, as I said, we don't need any specific feedback. This evening, we'll be getting, definitely be getting that later on. So I'm happy to answer any questions, revisit any slides, and, and help, and get some feedback from all of you on these topics. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for this very detailed, detailed presentation, both from city staff as well as our consultant, Mr. Matt Ramey. This is a lot to digest. It's the first time that we, the city of Thousand Oaks, are tackling this, these subjects in particular, which doesn't mean that we have been ignoring these issues at all. It's just that now there is a more, there is a stronger focus as this is part of our general plan update. And with that, I'm looking at my colleagues to see who would like to ask any questions or revisit any slides. We do have some public speakers, quite a few actually, about fifteen. So certainly will give my council colleagues an opportunity to ask questions first before we go to the speakers. None? Okay. Mr. Adam? Mr. Adam, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. That's a great presentation from Tim and Matt. Appreciate that very much. I learned a lot. I mean, environmental justice has so many facets and so many aspects to it, whether it's, you know, health or civic engagement, physical activity. There's just so many different aspects to the topic. But what strikes me most of all, as to what this city council would have some control over, would be, more than anything, would be the housing issue. And if you want to define equity as resources distributed based on a need, I think it's been adequate, adequately presented and proven to us that there is a need in the city of Thousand Oaks for affordable and workforce housing. And that's where this council can really make a difference. And I, and I think we have been, and I think we can do even better going forward. You know, I think back to our last council meeting, the woman that spoke, Spanish-speaking woman, and she really told the story to me that really sums it up. She works in Thousand Oaks, hard-working person, but lives in Canoga Park. Can't afford to live in Thousand Oaks. Has to commute every day in, commute back out again. Her kids live in Canoga Park. And she said, you know, I'd, I'd like to live here in this community. I'd like to spend my money here in Thousand Oaks. I'd like my kids to be educated in Thousand Oaks. I don't want to have to commute every day. And, you know, the barrier, which actually comes under this banner of environmental justice, is housing for her. And again, I think that's where the city council can make, make a real difference. You know, as it is now, we are pretty adamant about asking any builder to afford, to include an affordable or workforce housing element in their proposals. I'm sure later in the year, when we look at this inclusionary housing rule, which I believe we will be, we'll have to decide whether or not to make that absolutely mandatory after we're done the general plan update. I'm sure we're going to look at that very closely. But, you know, with sixty percent of our workforce going in and out of the city every day, because it's, because of this affordability situation, it, it really makes me understand, you know, the, I feel the obligation we have to provide more affordable and workforce housing with any chance that we get. And, and I think that that is a big part of this whole environmental justice thing and a big part of equity. And I'm, I'm glad of what we've done so far this year, and I, I will hope we continue to do that and to continue to work with these builders to squeeze out the most we possibly can so our, our workers here in town can work and live here in Thousand Oaks with all the commutes and all, all the other hassle that they have to go through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Protem Engler?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. Again, good presentation, wide-ranging, and as the mayor pointed out, we had not really seen this presentation much before this moment, so some of us are trying to digest all that was spoken today. The one thing that I've noticed during COVID, one of the things that really was, was highlighted to me was some inequity in broadband within our own city. Now, broadband, of course, across the state is, has a wide, very wide application. But even within our own city, we had broadband issues with some kids not being able to stay online and everything else. I'm interested, Mr. Ramey, if you have any language or, or ideas on how the city could approach either partnering with the school district or partnering with companies, and what has happened in other cities to provide an equitable broadband within a community?
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good question. And there, there, you are not the only community that has sort of discovered the inequities in broadband and internet service that have happened as a result of COVID. It's, it's probably happened in just about every community across the state. And so a lot of work really has been done in the last year, and I, I think that we're going to see real changes in, in the near future. You really identified a couple of, of ways to do this, which is partnering with the school districts and really partnering with the broadband companies to make sure that it is available and that the, the infrastructure is in place. The city can work with those broadband companies to make sure that it's really easy to add extra, excess capacity. You can help subsidize that. And then a lot of the broadband companies are actually offering free or very reduced internet to low-income populations. And so that's already happening in a lot of places, which is really wonderful that a lot of these companies have stepped up to do that. But I think that support from the city and making it a priority is actually a really low-cost way of increasing equity and access across the city.
Madam Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, this is Ingrid. If I could also provide a few comments?
Sure, go ahead.
Compared to broadband? Thank you. So the city has participated in the broadband consortium of the Pacific Coast. It includes the counties of Santa Barbara, Ventura, and San Luis Obispo. In terms of our broadband coverage, we have pretty expansive broadband coverage. On a grading scale of A, B, or C, we've been rated as a B. So the issue is not so much the access, but it's the ability to, to pay for the broadband. We also, I wanted to let you know that we do provide, we have the hotspots available at the library, and we also plan to expand that resource. And we also are aware that Safe Passage was able to provide hotspots to families during COVID, and we also know that the school district provided hotspots to those families that did not have internet access. So I just wanted to let you know just some of the, the current efforts that have either been underway or how we've responded as an organization.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Yes, I know that we have Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Yes, I know that we have taken some, what I would call, you know, corrective actions or emergency actions to help out in this. I was just looking at more, at a more global solution to some of this so that we don't have this problem should another shutdown come and we have people locked in their homes and that sort of thing. As, you know, and I think this question again is for, for Mr. Ramey. You know, as we recognize that, you know, Thousand Oaks has, has some zoning practices that you've, you've identified to perhaps act as exclusionary to some, some people of lower income. We are trying to embed, as Councilmember Adams mentioned, we are trying to embed housing within existing projects that address some low-income issues. Do you have any ideas of how to go about that so that we can more than just do a few units, but to be able to actually meet our RENA numbers in terms of having some low-income and very low-income housing embedded in our market rate projects?
Yeah, I mean, this is a, a huge conversation about how to actually do that. And I, and I think that for the most part, we should defer a lot of that conversation to future city council meetings. You know, it's a combination of having requirements to, to have the projects build affordable housing, which you have in your control to do that. It's about incentivizing it through various ways. And then the combination hopefully will, will result in more affordable housing being built in the city. But it's, it's definitely a long conversation, inclusionary housing bonuses, and then looking at making sure that the development that is allowed to be built is actually feasible to be built, and that is definitely a challenge because it actually gets into higher-density development in some instances because of that feasibility.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Ramey, you used the phrase exclusionary mindset, which bothered me. I wonder why, what were you referring to when you said that?
What I, apologies. What I was referring to is comments that were made by some members of the community that there were, that lower-income and minority populations should live in other communities and not in Thousand Oaks, and to do that through zoning practices and the density of development. So there is some very clear comments that were made that low-income communities, low-income households should live in other communities and not in Thousand Oaks. And so that was the term that I use for exclusionary mindset.
Well, you know, I, I don't know where that idea came from. I've seen the evolution of Thousand Oaks. Hey, when I came, there were 18,000 people here and probably only about, oh, 15% to 20% of the land here was developed. And people came here originally for affordable housing. I know that's why I came. I came because I couldn't afford the same type house in Gondal, California, where I live. And what happened was that this housing stock continued to be supplied, but I presume that as of development went on and on and on, and we went from, you know, 18,000 to 30,000, then 60,000 and 80,000 and so forth. It was not any conscious, in my opinion, idea of excluding anybody. The developers, I guess, learned new techniques of building, and they saw it was possible to put more amenities in, in their houses and so forth. And when that started to happen, the price of housing went up. But there was no conscious exclusionary mindset, as you say. In other words, this wasn't done to try to keep anybody from coming here. This was done for developers to try to make their maximum profit. I guess they assumed that if they put more amenities in their houses, that, you know, people would like that, and they would be glad to pay a little more. And that, I think, put us where we are today. But there was no conscious determination of some master control person to, to try, to try to keep somebody out of here. I, it bothers me, what Councilman Adams said about people having to live other places to work here. And, and I'm sorry that is the case, but I think these were market forces that, that were not done with any sort of prejudicial intent. Developers simply want people with money. And so they're going to do, I'm not trying to denigrate developers, but, you know, when you have capitalism, you have the profit motive. And so I believe that is what happened to the Cano Valley. But I don't think that the city council ever zoned the land was, you know, with encouraging a certain type of person to come here or ever approved tracks or development with the idea of what would be the characteristics of the person who would later buy that. They simply went by ordinances that said if a developer came in and he had done A, B, C, and D, you know, he was entitled to develop. And, you know, my point is, without going on and on, is what you have today, in my opinion, you know, is a city that has evolved basically due to economics. And there was no attempt, in my opinion, to keep anybody out. I'm sorry that economics have kept people out, because I came here as a junior high school teacher with a very low income, and I had to, you know, work summers and all sorts of things to raise enough money. Just in those days, you had to show that you were making 1/3 of the total price of the house every year. You know, to buy my first house, I had to show I was making $12,000, which was difficult to do. But now, you know, the price is nowhere near people, people's incomes who want to live here. And I'm just sorry that that happened. But I, but I hope that, no, that's not, that's not a widespread idea that somebody here had an exclusionary mindset. I reject that. And, and I think it's horrible that would, somebody would think that. One, one more point. You talked about institutional racism and structural racism. Would you mind explaining that a little more to me?
Sure. I switched audio. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
We can see you too.
Great. So institutional racism is when institutions make decisions that either implicitly or explicitly exclude people based on, on race, and race is strongly correlated with income. Structural racism is when multiple institutions are working together in order to make that happen. And so an example of structural racism would be the combination of zoning, which I just had mentioned, and then redlining in communities, and then at the same time putting factories and other polluting industries in low, in poor and minority areas. So those combinations of factors would be the, sort of the overall structures that are tied together of government working with, again, inadvertently through individual decisions, but with other institutions such as lending institutions and businesses in order to combine so that together they add up to more than just the individual decisions of any institution.
Well, again, I don't need to sound defensive here, but all the years I've been here, I've never known either one. I've never seen racism here in Thousand Oaks. I'm not sure why we have such a low African-American component. I guess it does have to do with income and, and so forth. I know when I was on the county board of supervisors to have African-Americans in the county sheriff's department, we had to advertise in Los Angeles newspapers because of that problem. But I think, just to sum up, I think a lot of this, the stuff that just happened here in Ventura County, in Thousand Oaks, I mean, we just grew. And I don't, I've never known any city or county official been consciously tried through zoning or pricing or anything else to practice racism, and I resent that completely. And I'm, I'm sorry that anybody ever thought that about Ventura County or Thousand Oaks, because I've never known anyone in city or county or on the park, or Karen Park District ever felt that way. And I'm sorry somebody did.
Mr. Jones, could I, could I just say, I just want to clarify. I wasn't saying that it was individuals who said they were racist. It was the institutions that were in place rather than the individual. And that's why I intentionally didn't use individual racism, and I used institutional. So it wasn't necessarily people standing up and saying, "I am consciously doing this because of race." It's that these broader institutions, including my profession of planning, which created zoning, which excluded whole sets of people and classified where people based on income, which is what the zoning does, that created that situation. So it wasn't the individual that it was intentionally happening. It was that the institutions as a whole were, were doing that. And I do recognize this is a very tough conversation overall to have, to talk about race in, in a community.
Well, I would just follow on with that. I've seen these zoning manuals. I've seen planning documents, you know, many, many. I never saw one that said, "We're doing this because of racism." You know, "We want to raise the prices here to keep certain people." I mean, it was done as good planning, you know, like the general plan, where you put commercial and then next to that high density. And then as you fan out, you get lower and lower density, and you make provision for the topography, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, if that equals the desire to, you know, make it hard for certain people to live here, I'm sorry. I guess what you would have to do, what, what I think you're suggesting is that our old planning documents and, and I don't think cities had planning departments before World War II. So if you look at old cities, you know, they just grew from where factories were. We're in east-to-west country, right? Look at all the cities in the United States, mainly they grew from east to west. And they were, the first people came to be around the factories so they could get work. And the owners and the people with more income moved to the west to get away from the smell, the fumes from the factories and so forth. In other words, those were the determinants quite often that led to the type of thing you're talking about, about different areas for different people. And the factory workers, you know, had a poor place to live. But I thought here in, especially in the cities that developed after World War II, like Thousand Oaks, that our good planning processes would simply lead to good wholesome neighborhoods and healthy people and, you know, and good schools and good parks. And I didn't know we were doing this to try to become islands of people that didn't want other people to come here. I mean, that, that, you know, that's crazy. We just did what we did because of good planning practices. And let me say one thing about our city staff and county staffs. We're teams. It's teamwork. It's one for all and all for one. If people have a good opinion of the city and the city council, it's because of the staff. We meet very few people one-on-one. You know, they're, they're the window on the city, and we're a team. One for all and all for one. I've never known any... I'm going to stop, but I hope you have an idea that we are good-hearted people here and, and we're trying to do right. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. You know, it is important to have this study session because we do get to talk about issues that we're probably not all that comfortable with. And that is just, that is ethnicity, it is race, it is even class, because we're talking about low income. And yes, it is true that there are residents, homeowners in town that say that, that fear low, that high-density apartments will lead to crime and a reduction in property values. Now, is that sentiment a racist statement, or is it an elitist statement? I personally don't think that high-density housing will lead to crime and, and a decrease in property values at all. So, and to make a statement that says inclusionary thinking, you know, we want to be careful not to say that the City of Thousand Oaks with its planning is, is kind of racist. I, I don't think that is the case at all. So, but that said, we will move on to other council members. And next up, we have Councilmember McNamee, and then I believe that Mr. Adam has his hand back up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ramey, I've got a question for you. I need to dovetail a little bit on what Councilmember Jones just said, and Madam Mayor just commented. I need to get some clarification here and give me some better examples of this, that what is institutional racism in the sense of how zoning can be institutionally racist when the City of Thousand Oaks was built to be primarily a single-family resident city, and that it was zoned as such and built out as such, yet welcomed the opportunity for everyone who could afford to live here to purchase a house and want to be here, could do so? How is that institutional racism when I saved up for five years living on the west side, commuting to San Fernando Valley for my practice, and able then, after the five years of savings, to come up with a down payment to buy in Thousand Oaks? And I didn't experience and didn't see how that was institutionally racism. I, I saw that as, I wanted to live in Thousand Oaks. I needed to save up for a certain amount. I commuted from West LA to the San Fernando Valley, saved up enough money, bought the house, and have enjoyed 24 years in this beautiful city of ours where people take care of their family, look after their neighbor, are involved in the community, help others. That, to me, is a strength of a, of a community that welcomes everyone, and I found that in here in Thousand Oaks. So tell me how zoning, open to everybody, is institutional racism? I'm having difficulty understanding this, and I'd like for you to explain it to me, please.
Sure. You know, you, you clearly bring up good points, you and, and Mr. Jones as well. And this is again where we, sort of where we were to where we are now. And I think there's a historical context here. And, you know, I want, I want to be clear with what my, my comments were, where I'm trying to provide a framing for what the research and what the, the latest thinking is on, in the planning profession. So the, the idea is not that it is, was intentionally using zoning in order to exclude. It was that the, because only a certain percentage of the population, which was predominantly white, could afford to purchase in the community, that that is, that, that the, that was how it relates to race. So yes, it is not intentionally based on race alone. It's based on income, and income is strongly correlated with race. So we see that now with, with housing as well, where the more affordable housing tends to be higher-density housing. And so, you know, we, we recognize that there's a very, an absolutely wonderful character here in the community that I think everyone doesn't want to negatively impact. And so, again, it's, this is about the idea of being able to provide housing and opportunities for all in the wonderful city that you have, just like you had the opportunity to be here. So again, it wasn't individuals making individual racist decisions. It was the institution which, over time, ended up excluding a certain segment of the population because they could not afford to live here.
Well, let me, let me follow up on your question or your explanation there. Regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, is not every... Regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, is not every individual able to save up for a down payment, have a high enough credit score, have enough of an income, so one-third of your income goes to, no more than to principal interest taxes and insurance, to qualify for the learned loan to purchase that? Is that not open to all Americans to come live in Thousand Oaks? And which is what we all have done in the past and will do in the future for those who want to live here? How is that institutional racism?
That is not.
Then that's exactly what we're talking about here, and that's why I'm having this discussion with you, to explain that, that when a house is built in an area that is X dollars, why is that institutional racism? If someone can qualify to come in and do that, and, and live in that community by saving up for a down payment, having the income, having the credit score, how is that institutional racism through zoning, if they can go in and buy that house?
It is, it is because the institutions that we have in place have advantaged a certain portion of the population over another portion of the population. So that we know that, that race and ethnicity is strongly correlated with income. And so, you know, essentially, we know that there is this strong correlation. And so what, what we're trying to get at here again is we're, and I mentioned this term of equality versus equity. What you are talking about is equality. Everyone is equally able to purchase a house. But it's not equity, because not everyone has the same means in order to do that. And, and it's institutions that have been put in place over years, and years in society as a whole, that have disadvantaged certain populations over other populations. And so that is, you know, you, you really just highlighted equity versus equality in, in what you were saying. And so again, can anyone buy a house? Are they excluded based on race alone? No, they're not. Are certain people able to afford it because of the institutions that are in place? Are certain populations of society able to afford it more than others? Absolutely. And so we can change the zoning in order to allow more people at different income levels, therefore at different races and ethnicities, to move into the city. And so that's what the concept is. Again, you know, ultimately, it's the council's decision about how you want to move forward with this. I'm trying to present kind of the background information, and, and ultimately, it's the council's, really the council's decision on the direction.
I, I thank you for your explanation. I'd like to dwell deeper offline on this with you. It's a topic that I'd like to learn more about. Sharing with me. We've got the Spanish translation going on right now. Versus these two issues you're discussing, I need to learn more about it. It's not an easy topic, and that's why I'm asking these key questions. But I think it'd probably do the council better for me to ask these offline and get a little bit more versed as to what we're trying to accomplish here, and I appreciate your sharing the answers with me. Thank you.
And, and I'd be happy to share additional resources and talk to you offline about this, because it's, it's a challenging topic, because it's dealing with beyond, again, beyond individual decisions. And that's the important, that's the institution, rather than the individual, and equality versus equity. So we'll, we can definitely talk offline about this.
Excellent. I look forward to it, and thank you very much for answering us.
Mr. Adam, followed by Mayor Potem Engler.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I, I know I already spoke once, so just a quick follow-up. I don't think Mr. Ramey's report was accusing anybody of anything. I think on those exclusionary remarks, he was just reporting what a few people in town said to him. And I'm sure they were a very small minority, but he put it in, in the report regardless. Anyway, Matt, you, you bring up a very good point about the difference between equality and equity. And, you know, equity, to me, means that you, you dole out resources based on need, versus everybody gets exactly the same. And with less than 2% of our housing stock affordable here in Thousand Oaks, less than 2%, with 48,000 units we have in the city, there's a need for affordable housing. And, you know, there's one issue I think our citizens are pretty much united on, and I hear it from businesses, I hear it from families, I hear it from residents, I hear it from everybody. We need more affordable housing in the city of Thousand Oaks. So that's the big opportunity for this council going forward. That's the big opportunity to correct that situation and make that happen. And again, if we work with these builders that come forward, as somebody said, maybe, maybe it was Ingrid or somebody, you know, maybe even going beyond just demanding affordable workforce housing, but partnering with them and some financial incentives, I think we can really make a, a, a real positive outcome, a fair outcome in the city, to house some of our workforce folks. Thank you.
Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that the presentation tonight was not, not trying to be accusatory. And I think it is what, nobody, nobody meant this situation to be the way it is. I, I think of, if I'm in my mid-age crisis, and I go out and buy a nice shiny red Corvette, I don't mean to be a, a target or attractive to a, a police officer, but I think a shiny red Corvette coming down the street, people who may take a look at it. It, it is what it is. I didn't mean to be a, to have police officers looking at my shiny red Corvette as I came down the street, but it is what it is. In the same way, as we developed as a city, we didn't mean to have some exclusionary issues crop up. It, it is just what happened. That leaves us with, now, what do we do about it? And that's, that's, I think, where the general plan and how we're moving forward with this maybe can help us address some of the unintended consequences of what we did in the past, which made perfect sense, which there's, there's nobody saying we did anything wrong. But the result of what happened is that we now are, need to address this, this, this issue of people having to drive in from the valley, or drive in from other areas, because they can't afford here. So that's, that's, I think, where we should be, maybe move forward with this in an affirmative way, so that we, we can address those unintended consequences of what came before us.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Very well stated. We have, as I said, 16 speakers. So we will now go to the speakers. And Madam Clerk, how many minutes do they have?
Three minutes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have, first up, Rosana Guerra, and then Amy Reid, and then Clint.
Thank you, Mayor Bill de la Peña, and City Council for the leadership on this important topic. When my husband and I bought our home in 1993, we were embraced into the community with open arms. Our neighborhood cul-de-sac hosted a Welcome to the Neighborhood get-together in our honor. Never in my wildest dreams could I have imagined being so welcomed by strangers. We were all young, many with young children, all participating in the local schools and activities. Some were transplants from other parts of California or beyond. I'd like to share this story about Thousand Oaks. When I was, which happened to me when I was a young, busy mom, I had to run to Vons, and I left my wallet in the shopping cart. And when I got home, I realized, I panicked, oh my God, I left my, my wallet in the, in the shopping cart, and I expected it to be gone. I zoomed back to Vons, and there it was, laying in the untouched, laying in the shopping cart, with my ID, my credit cards, and money still there. So Thousand Oaks is a wonderful place to live. But through the years, I've noticed that our neighborhood has changed. All of those young kids have now become grown adults, and have all moved on to other neighborhoods. All of our older neighbors have also relocated. One by one, college-age kids say there's nothing to bring them back to Thousand Oaks. Older neighbors sell and move on to other parts of the county or out of state, because Thousand Oaks doesn't have enough affordable real estate to downsize. I have lived here for almost 28 years, longer than any other place in my life, and I want to continue to be welcomed in Thousand Oaks for the rest of my life. But I have worries that should also worry City Council. Is there enough housing that will support me and my husband as I age and get older and want to downsize that's affordable? If I become disabled, will your future plans include access to convenient transportation and housing for me? And what about my adult son when he graduates from Channel Islands? Will he be able to find an apartment that he can afford? Or will he have to relocate outside of Thousand Oaks? So these are some of my real concerns. So I have an ask of City Council. My first is to create housing that's welcoming to young adults, new to the workforce, and seniors that would like to downsize to something affordable that's based upon what they can afford on their income. A board for, that addresses the disabled across generations, looking at, looking at firming up the loopholes for inclusionary city codes and transportation infrastructure that needs to be addressed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Again, the speakers have three minutes. Next up, we have Amy Reid, followed by Clint.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, and City Council members and the city staff. I am Amy Reid. I live in the unincorporated part of Newbury Park. I've been in this community since 1973, and I remember when there were unpaved streets, no signals, and a lot of beautiful green hillsides. I have a proposal. I had this whole beautiful speech written, but it's been a long evening, so I'm going to skip to the good part. Thank you to, to Mr. Ramey, and to everyone who's commented on the city's plan. I think it's going to be beautiful. My suggestion would be that those people who wrote the comments that were so fearful, and were so threatened by the fact that perhaps low-income housing would drive them out of the Thousand Oaks. I think if we had a community liaison who could have a direct outreach with both disadvantaged communities, and with people who've been here for a long time, like I have, would help them, help people who are frightened and, and scared of losing their, what they have, that there really isn't any reason to be fearful, that welcoming young families will improve our school system, welcoming young families will improve our tax base, and to remember for those people who are frightened, that years ago, we were the young families who were starting, starting out here. I couldn't afford the house I'm living in right now, if I were to buy it now. And it is a Casa Cano. So that was the first housing development in Newbury Park. I also think that if we, oh, and I shouldn't say this, but if we formed another committee, perhaps comprised of people who are very anti the mixed use and the low-income housing, and are very frightened by the fact that perhaps people who live here might also want to, who, excuse me, who work here, might also want to live here, and people who are open to inclusion and equity, maybe we could get together and find some common ground, instead of being afraid and, and fighting each other. I hope that together, we can all understand the need for action, for building a new, bright, equitable, and inclusive Thousand Oaks, one which reflects both the past and the future. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Clint, followed by Anahi Quiroz Romero via telephone, requesting a translator, and then Valerie Aguilar. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Clint, and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks, which sits on Chumash land. I'd like to thank the city for holding a study session on environmental justice and equity, and I look forward to seeing action on the intersection of climate justice, environmental justice, racial justice, and safe and affordable housing. I would urge the mayor and city council to adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance. The city of Thousand Oaks desperately needs affordable housing, and an inclusionary housing ordinance would be a vital tool in countering exclusionary practices, and put housing in reach for disadvantaged persons. Additionally, I would urge the mayor and city council to adopt a resolution for diversity, inclusion, and equity of all. A resolution is absolutely necessary, moving into an uncertain future. To quote activist Naomi Holland, quote, "Around the world, the effects of climate change are felt most acutely by the people who are least responsible for it. It's critical that we connect the dots between climate and racial justice in order to truly build communities that are equitable for all," end quote. The movement for a transition to a greener, safer, decarbonized world cannot succeed until there are structural changes in society to redress centuries of systemic racism. Climate justice is environmental justice, is racial justice. The mayor and the city council have it in their power to effect change on the local level, and make Thousand Oaks a more equitable place to live going into the future. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Romero, followed by Valerie Aguilar and Lillian Teran. And the translators requested for Ms. Romero, as well as Ms. Teran. Do we have Ms. Romero?
I, I don't have Ms. Romero in the Spanish-speaking line, Mayor.
Okay. We will then go to Valerie Aguilar via telephone. I don't see that she requested a translator. Do we have Valerie?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, yes. Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, and Thousand Oaks City Council members. My name is Valerie Aguilar, and I've been a community member in Thousand Oaks for 12 years. I'm here to speak about the need for a more racial and diverse committee board and members within our city council. Growing up in Thousand Oaks as a young child, I always felt underrepresented outside of my household. As a Latina child, there was little to no community figures that I could look up to, until I reached high school and began getting involved with school clubs, such as Latinos Connection and Latino Youth Leadership. From there, I felt empowered, and many other students as well. However, we all share the same experience and frustrations that came with not being fully represented within our community, despite being a vast demographic of Thousand Oaks. As a freshman in college now, I'm advocating on behalf of future generations residing in Thousand Oaks, and their need to make their voices heard at important positions, such as school board, city council, et cetera. It has become apparent that there is an ever-growing presence gap between our city council and those representing minority groups living in Thousand Oaks. Families who are sending their children to school in our communities, families who run businesses within our communities, are only a few examples of the many individuals who feel that decisions are not efficient enough in addressing their needs. Especially when the pandemic is occurring about a year later, it's important to get input from minority groups such as Latinos, who are disproportionately affected by the pandemic. Therefore, I'm encouraging the city council to make an effort to recruit more diversity in the board, which in turn would allow for more inclusive decision-making in the future. There are undoubtedly many benefits in diversifying local public office positions, such as city council. As studies have shown that minority groups have advantage compared to white members when forming connections with other minorities. Additionally, minority representatives are able to sympathize and recognize issues affecting their community, with this advantage coming from one shared background, language, and culture, which in the context of Thousand Oaks includes institutional racism, needs for equity, environmental justice, and others that affect the minority population. As certain representatives may be unaware of these issues beforehand, as they have yet to experience it, therefore, underrepresented groups may feel more, much more inclined to reach out and ask for assistance, and ultimately get a much-needed spot at the table. If we want to advocate for inclusivity, then it must start in positions of local power. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have, do we have Ms. Romero back? All right. We will move on to Lillian Teran.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We will move on to Lillian Teran, who I believe has requested Spanish translator, as well as Sonia Avalos. We cannot hear Lillian or the translator.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and city staff. My name is Lillian Teran, and I'm the president of... My name is Lilian Teran, and I'm the president of Adelante Community. Adelante is part of another group in the community that is Conejo Unido. Our goal is to fight for equity in our city. Today, I would like to ask you to allow the building of neighborhoods where people of all levels of income could live, people of all backgrounds and all types of abilities. We would love to have families be able to afford an apartment with their income without the need of having to put two or more families together. So some of the communities that Adelante represents live in such dire conditions, in many conditions that none of you would want to live with. Today, I want to share with you a personal experience that is there forever in my heart. When we arrived here in 2008, we didn't have medical insurance. We could not pay for it because we were barely able to pay the rent, the bills, and food. So we had to keep our major medical expenses insurance in Mexico so we could take our children there if they got sick. Can you imagine how we felt as parents, how we felt when our children had fever? I can't even explain to you how that feels. Some people told me, "Go to the Westminster Clinic, which is free." But we were afraid, we were terrified to become public charge. We were not well-informed. Now I know that we would have been accepted. That's why I'm asking you, inform the families in Thousand Oaks about all of the resources that are available to them. And what are, what's available and what are the legal implications of those? We had the option of going to Mexico, but not so many families are as fortunate as we were. Thank you very much for your attention and for your time.
Thank you. I would like to add that indeed, the Westminster Free Clinic does provide free health care to anyone who seeks it and anyone who needs it. No questions asked, no question asked about immigration status. You are in safe hands with Westminster Free Clinic and in good hands with your health. Next, we have Anahi Romero, and I believe she is joining us. Lourdes, can you let us know, please?
Madam Mayor, she is ready to speak.
Excellent. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Sonia Avalos. I have three children that go to the Thousand Oaks district. When I first came to this country 14 years ago, I came with my little two kids, and my husband was the only one that had a job till today. Because if I had a job, I would have had to pay my income to a babysitter. So I decided to take care of my kids. When I arrived here, and always I have lived with two or three more families because rent is pretty high here. We're unable to pay rent and bills because my husband makes minimum wage. The house where I live is so old. I'm in fear of it falling down at any moment. We have been looking for another place to live because I think with the winds, this is going to fall. But, but the rent is between $3,000 and $4,000, and we truly don't have that much money. So I'm asking you to please build low-income housing. Because many of us Hispanics, we come here to work. We, we go to yard sales, people clean cars, we do what's necessary. But the rent is so high. We just want to have the ability to live in a place just ourselves, not with strangers. One of my nieces was living with some strangers, and she was raped. It is difficult for me to say these words, and it hurts. But I am so grateful that you listened to me. Thank you. Please take this into consideration. And hopefully, there will be some housing so we can continue to live here and be fortunate to live here in the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you very much, and good evening, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I'm getting word that perhaps Anahi is back. Do we have Anahi back? This was Sonia. Lourdes, if you could let me know if we are going to, Anahi?
Madam Mayor, Anahi is on my line.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Ms. Mayor, I am Anahi Quiroz Romero. I have lived in Thousand Oaks 18 years. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in my native language. I believe this is evidence of how things are changing in this city. I would not want to think that my neighbors are racist. And all I have to do is think about the evening of June 5th of 2018, where certain people showed up to a meeting just like this and stayed till 1:00 a.m. to discuss whether this city was going to be supporting SB 54 law or not. Fortunately, the income of the city won, and this did not pass. So here we are now with interpreters, and I am so very grateful for this. I believe that it's important for us to remember where we came from and know where we're going. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk to you so we can discuss what our future is. Thank you for including the Spanish-speaking community. We are migrants. We are the same as you. We want the same things. We just want affordable housing. I believe we need to focus on those caretakers that take care of the elderly in the nursing homes. Also, the people who take care of our children, the people who take care of our houses. This will be a way to focus. And also, this would also show that we care about the people that care for our loved ones. We have the same problems you do. During fires, our rental houses burned. During the borderline shooting, some of our acquaintances who worked at their restaurant, they died. When the pandemic started, the lack of access to unemployment benefits affected the migrant community a lot, in a lot different way than it affected you. There are so many people that live in one place with eight or 10 other people. I worry about what's going on at the 805 Warwick Apartments. Sometimes I ask myself, has, has the city been talking to them? Obviously, when the situation improves, this area is going to be affected. But I believe it's very important to set examples. In Oxnard, there is an organization by the name of Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. They build affordable housing for farm workers. Perhaps we, and I say "we" because I feel like I'm part of this city. And that's how I like to speak. I think this city is so beautiful. I feel very fortunate to live here. I would like for others to be able to live here, but it's so expensive. Perhaps the best we can do is take care of those people who have been living here for so many years.
Thank you very much for sharing your story with us.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Can we have a five-minute break, please?
Sure. We will take a quick five-minute break. We do have several more speakers. We'll take a quick recess. With our next speaker, joining us via video, Mary Ann Van Zyle. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I have a few points to make this evening. First, I've been following the land use plan process, and I'm pleased to see that the city has made contact with several groups who have historically lacked access to the political process. It would be a shame if these tender new relationships were left to flounder after the general plan review process is complete. To prevent this from happening, I encourage the city to establish a community liaison position to maintain and broaden these relationships. This is important if the city is to meet the diverse needs of all of the residents it serves. I also encourage the city to adopt a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy during the general plan process with measurable goals and standards to assure that the city's behavior matches its intentions. If it is true that the city is not racist, declare it so and measure the results. Finally, I would like to bring to the city's attention a wonderful model developed in San Luis Obispo County called Heal SLO. This is a committee comprised of public health officials, school administrators, city planners, and community members who are brought together to improve community health determining factors in San Luis Obispo County. This committee has been named as a committee of review, meaning they receive all project plans in front of the county for review. They neither approve nor disapprove of projects, but they provide comments on health and environmental factors at play in a project and provide comments for improvement. Adopting this model in the city of Thousand Oaks would go a long way to make sure that all projects maximize factors that improve health and environmental equity. Thank you for the privilege of speaking.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting. Our next speaker is Leanne Holland, followed by Rachel Gula, and then Naomi Aguilar.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, council members and city staff. My name is Leanne Holland, and I live in Newberry Park. I am the leader of Thrive Conejo, and we are part of a coalition of organizations that works together on issues of equity and inclusion in our city. We are Conejo Unido. As the mother of a child with a disability, I would like to speak tonight about two barriers that people with disabilities face: exclusion and low expectations. As a society, we tend to educate students with disabilities, particularly those with complex needs, separately from other kids, despite decades of research showing better outcomes when kids are educated together. Not only does this practice of separateness have academic impacts, but it also has long-term social and societal impacts. When my daughter was in preschool, I invited a few of her classmates to a birthday playdate. Not one parent replied to the invitation. My daughter is 11 years old, and she's never been to a sleepover. She's never been to a movie. There's lots of places in our community where we just don't go because it's not always easy to brave the stares and comments if she gets overwhelmed or behaves in ways that don't conform to social expectations. The reality is that our society doesn't tend to value those who have physical disabilities or are neurodiverse. And the resulting isolation that children can experience in school usually continues into adulthood. People with disabilities are twice as likely to be unemployed and twice as likely to live in poverty. As a result, around 70% of adults with disabilities live at home with a parent or guardian. The lack of affordable and accessible housing and supportive services is a barrier to living independently and has created a national housing crisis for people with disabilities. Parents like me are left wondering what will happen to my child when I'm gone. This is one of the reasons Conejo Unido is asking for a community liaison for more direct outreach to disadvantaged communities and a needs assessment to find out more about the underserved groups in our community. We believe that a comprehensive approach is needed if we want to create livable and inclusive neighborhoods for all Thousand Oaks residents. I'd like to close with a story of hope. Before the pandemic, I would regularly take my daughter to the dollar store to pick out a toy as a reward for achieving milestones. Waiting in line is hard for her, but I was so happy to celebrate with her that day, I was oblivious to the other shoppers. She was pacing around the checkout area and stemming in her excitement, and I was laughing and hugging her every time she got near. Afterwards, we were walking to our car, and a woman behind me said, "Excuse me." I flinched and braced myself for the inevitable scolding on how I let my child misbehave in the store. Instead, she simply said, "I wanted to say thank you for bringing your daughter into the community and sharing your joy like that. What you are doing is important, and I hope you'll keep it up. My dream is for Thousand Oaks to become a community where everyone has a place, and celebration of differences is the norm, not the exception." Thank you for listening.
And thank you for sharing that story. Next up, we have Rachel Gula, followed by Naomi Aguilar, and then Carol Shelton.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, city council members, for hosting. Thank you, Matthew Ramey, for clarifying the terms of equality versus equity. My name is Rachel Gula. I have lived in the beautiful Conejo Valley for over 20 years. I've enjoyed field trips to the Chumash Indian Museum and the Chumash House at Rancho Sierra Vista. I want to acknowledge that when we are living on stolen, colonized, and gentrified land, it is our responsibility to honor the indigenous communities by working towards the preservation of our sacred planet. The Chumash people need to have a seat at the table and be included as an active part of the conversation regarding our city's climate action plan. We must seek, acknowledge, and value the wisdom of the indigenous elders to protect the land and prepare for the changing climate. Several times a week, I enjoy our Conejo Valley Open Space Trails, mostly wild wood where I live, and collect litter while hiking. I enjoy giving back to the land and protecting the wildlife that flourishes here. My question for you is, why is there no place to recycle plastic bottles, aluminum cans, and other debris that is collected in our open space? Our parks and trailheads mostly have a single bin just for trash. However, 91% of all plastic is not recycled. Instead, it ends up in our oceans or a landfill, taking up to 1,000 years to decompose. We need to follow what other communities are already doing. I am urging Thousand Oaks to implement responsible waste management in our open spaces, incorporating clearly labeled bins for recycle, landfill, and compost at every park, trailhead, and community space. We need to intend on banning all single-use plastic by 2022. This includes finding eco-friendly alternatives for restaurant-to-go containers, plastic utensils, and plastic bags, to name a few. Banning polystyrene plastics is an important step, but we must expand to include banning other single-use plastics as well. The city of Thousand Oaks has an opportunity to create these positive changes for our community. Through the recent partnership with Athen Services, we are being provided the tools and education to reach a zero-waste future. Imagine a community where composting food scraps is as easy as putting out your trash in recycle bins for weekly collection. The beautiful land in Conejo Valley provides a haven for many generations. There's too much at stake these next 10 years. We need to consult the Chumash in regard to climate action solutions. The indigenous people deserve educational representation and resources, including affordable housing, representation in city affairs, and cultural celebration in the arts. I strongly urge the city to adopt a resolution for diversity, inclusion, and equity of all. We can nurture our beautiful open spaces through responsible waste management and keeping a consistent dialogue with the Chumash elders to ensure that the city's commitment to equity is inclusive to the land's original people. We must take action to help preserve our natural environment in the Conejo Valley, as the earliest people have been doing for thousands of years. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Naomi Aguilar.
Mayor, mayor?
Yes, Mr. Adam?
May I just make a comment to the speaker, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Just very quickly, the city did enact a single-use disposable plastic ban just a couple of months ago, voted on unanimously by the city council, and it will go into effect in the end of this year, as we go through a transition period. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Naomi Aguilar, followed by Carol Shelton and Jesús Orozco.
Hello. Good evening, ma'am, mayor, and members of the council and staff. My name is Naomi Moya Aguilar, and I am a senior in Thousand Oaks High School. Thousand Oaks is a predominantly rich area, and many of its residents are high-income. And unfortunately, what this causes is that many people with lower income and their issues are quite overlooked. Which brings me to one of the topics I'd like the city to put some attention to, which is affordable housing. This way, more people would be encouraged to live here, including minorities who cannot afford to live here and are forced to move out. And I see this as, in my community, it is an issue, as was brought up earlier in the discussions, that, you know, many, many people in the Latino community cannot afford to live here, no matter how much they work or how many jobs they take on. Next, that brings me to how students sometimes cannot afford Wi-Fi or good Wi-Fi, which is a big issue right now, I feel, with the pandemic going on. And even though many students are provided with Wi-Fi or, you know, look for ways to get Wi-Fi, whether that be through going to a Starbucks nearby, the school, or McDonald's, see a Wi-Fi, that doesn't mean it will always be reliable. And it's because a lot of the times, they cannot afford it. Sometimes families cannot afford to get good enough Wi-Fi for students to have, you know, stable internet for their classes. And this doesn't just have to apply to students. This can also apply to, you know, people that have their own businesses, and they need to have meetings via Zoom and such. And unfortunately, not having that type of stable Wi-Fi is not something that people can afford right now. It's pretty much a necessity right now, considering the climate we're living in. Lastly, I wanted to talk about inclusion, specifically language inclusion. I'm very glad that this meeting had Spanish translations for those who need it, because I see this as a good step to make change, which takes me to the point that language inclusion is not that widely spread in this city, at least as far as I've seen. In one of the jobs I work, I found that I had to be used as a translator for Spanish many times, which I absolutely don't mind. And it makes me very happy that I can be helpful in that way. But I noticed that is a very common thing, and there's this constant language barrier, which I wish would be discussed much more. And I think we can take different steps towards inclusion, one of them being encouraging businesses to make signs, menus, and pamphlets, or anything that can be needed in different languages, in this case, Spanish, as it could help the Latino community that is not that well-versed in English, and it could help them feel much more welcome and such. This doesn't only apply to language. This can also even apply to gender, and even making gender-neutral bathrooms and such. But overall, I think starting to make these small changes to include different races, ethnicities, genders can make our city be a much more welcoming space for people, including minorities. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Carol Shelton, followed by Jesús Orozco, and then Lisa Powell.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, council members and city staff. My name is Carol Shelton, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I am one of the vice presidents of Adelante Comunidad Conejo, and I am on the leadership team of Thrive Conejo. And we are part of a coalition of organizations that works together on issues of equity and inclusion in our city, where Conejo Unido. Tonight, I would like to speak about individuals and families with unstable housing and the food deserts we have here in Thousand Oaks. Individuals and families are forced to live in substandard housing, renting a single room for their entire family, other families, and similar predicaments, while some individuals might just rent a space in the living room. This is no way to live. Our residents deserve better. Some of these families risk their lives to come to this country to secure a better life and better opportunities. Some are college students and young professionals trying to start their lives. They are staff at your favorite restaurant, work at your car dealership, and might even work in your home. They might, they work night and day and return to, and return home to the 60 to 100 square foot space that they call home. I lived in unstable housing. I was embarrassed and ashamed. It would have been easier and cheaper to move out of Thousand Oaks, but we loved it. We lived with friends in Thousand Oaks until my mother, a college-educated accountant, could get back on her feet after her divorce from my father. I currently live in a well-cared-for apartment and see many multifamily apartment units and see them doing their best to make ends meet and care for their families. I see myself in their children. I want all of these individuals and families to have a chance to live their American dream here in Thousand Oaks. to live their American dream here in Thousand Oaks. Our most vulnerable populations also live with food insecurity on a daily basis. Families living in Thousand Oaks should not have to rely on their local convenience market to put, to put food on their table. Food money does not stretch as far, and they may need to use CalFresh. While this seems like the biggest hurdle to overcome, I think it might just be the easiest issue to resolve. I hope that you hear this call to action, and local grocers are able to hire more staff that are bilingual and provide door-to-door transportation that some of the larger Latino markets provide. Can this happen in Thousand Oaks? Please help our vulnerable individuals and families live in adequate housing and to put, to put healthy, cost-effective, culturally relevant, and nutritious food on their tables. To help achieve our dream of a more equitable city, Canejo Unido has three requests: direct outreach through a community liaison for disadvantaged communities, representation through a committee that addresses issues of equity and inclusion, and a needs assessment for the underserved in our community. We hope that hearing our stories and experience tonight will help you understand the need for action, and that together, we can, we can work to build a more equitable and inclusive Thousand Oaks. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have next Jesús Orozco, followed by Lisa Powell, and our last speaker will be Shane Kay.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Pena, council members and city staff. My name is Jesús Orozco, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I am speaking on behalf of Adelante Community Canejo. We are part of a group of organization that works together on issue of equity and inclusion in our city. We are Canejo Unido. Tonight, I would like to speak about transportation issues. I am 19 years old and currently a freshman in Moore Park College. When I started high school, I made a school choice to go to Thousand Oaks High School. My home school was Westlake High School, but I felt more comfortable at Thousand Oaks because it was very wheelchair-accessible, and many of my Hispanic friends were going to be attending. But the only downside was, since I made school choice, I wasn't able to have transportation to get to school. I would have to find my own ride or either push myself to school. Unfortunately, my parents worked early in the morning, but I would sometimes get a ride from my father before work. I would be an hour early waiting for school to start. I would feel very tired, and I wouldn't be able to focus at school from waking up so early. I would always have to wheel myself back home in the afternoon. It would take me about two hours to get home from school, and once I was home, I would feel very exhausted and get blisters on my fingers. It was about two months until I was able to receive transportation to school. From what I have heard and I have personally experienced, many lower-income families would pay another family or a person to take their child to school in the morning and afternoon. The charge people normally pay, depending on the location of the school, is $8. Lower-income families would spend an average of $280 a month to get their child to school. These rides are very expensive for lower-income families. Students shouldn't be losing sleep and have to worry if they have a ride for school tomorrow. As a young college student who is disabled and relies on public transportation, I have tried the city's dial ride, and it's not the most efficient use of transportation. It would be helpful if the city provided accessible, timely, and affordable transportation so that I could participate in experiences that enable me to pursue my, my life dreams. To help achieve our dream of a more equitable city, Canejo Unido hopes that by hearing our personal stories and experiences tonight, it will help you understand the need for action and that together, we can work to build a more equitable and inclusive Thousand Oaks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story. Next, we have Lisa Powell, and the last speaker is Shane Kay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lisa Powell, 11,000 Oaks. Last month, I came here and talked about equity and inclusion as related to the general plan process. This evening, you've listened to a presentation that encompasses these issues. I'm hopeful that council members and anyone else listening feels they have more knowledge and an understanding that they can now utilize. Equity is a core value of the city's general plan update. Thousand Oaks has been as impacted as anywhere else by historical rules and policies made over time that were created to block certain people from living here. Suburbanization segregated neighborhoods by income. What we see in today's world and here in Thousand Oaks is a difficulty for those with modest incomes to find affordable housing, particularly near high-quality schools and amenities like healthy, affordable food options, internet access, and even delivery of the local town paper, like in our identified disadvantaged communities here. These issues, however, affect all of us. And when a locality holds on to restrictive zoning policies, eventually, more and more people get left out. People who have lived in Thousand Oaks for 40 years say that their adult children cannot afford to live here. Older residents, who no longer need a large home, want to downsize but can't afford a unit in one of the fancy, senior-living communities. I could provide justice and equity arguments all day long. And while I want to see city policy and the general plan grounded in these principles, I'm also cognizant that not everyone has that mindset, as has been seen tonight. Recent polling indicates that these arguments aren't the most effective way to convince folks to support new housing development. However, if residents can understand that our current housing shortage crisis affects them economically, they may be more open to the idea of new housing. Cal Lutheran reported recently that, in contrast to what was initially reported, Ventura County's economy shrunk considerably since 2007. A major factor is the lack of affordable housing. If you don't have enough housing that people of varying income levels can afford, people leave or don't move here in the first place. And then companies decline because they can't find employees. And companies we'd like to entice to come here won't. As it is, a majority of Thousand Oaks workforce drives in from other places in many instances because employees cannot afford to live here. My hope is that our city can talk about and embrace the economic benefits of developing housing, as well as the equity angle. I hope that our council and city staff will take seriously these tenants throughout the general plan update process and beyond in ways that are innovative, rather than following the same worn path. Actions like creating inclusionary zoning laws and building partnerships with community land trusts and nonprofit developers, rather than just putting a checkmark in a box and leaving ourselves to the mercy of private developers. Let's envision a future for Thousand Oaks that includes all residents, offers options for folks of differing incomes, ages, abilities, and backgrounds, and provides the infrastructure for a strong economy, as well as continued livability. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Last speaker is Shane. Is Shane with us?
Yes, hello, members of the council. I am, I'm hoping to, I'm hoping for something to happen on, hang on a second, I'm hoping for something to happen on affordability so that I can afford a place of my own. And the idea that density is affordable makes some sense on paper, but if we're counting on density to bring affordability to Thousand Oaks, we're going to be sorely disappointed. In 21st Century California, high-density housing is not affordable. Due to high land and construction costs, any market-rate units constructed will cost nearly as much to build as existing houses cost to buy. For example, if you allow developers to demolish a house and replace it with apartments, the apartments will not actually be cheaper than the house they replaced. They will be just as expensive. And so the result of density will be the construction of high-rent units that are out of reach for anyone who doesn't have a high income, and there won't be anything meaningful for those of us young people who would like a cheaper place to live. If we're talking about subsidized housing that is actually reserved for low-income residents and young families, that's a different story, and that's what's needed. But anything added at a market rate will be just as out of reach as what exists today. You want to see an example of this? Look at West Hollywood, which is zoned primarily for multifamily housing, and it's just as expensive as Thousand Oaks. You look beyond Thousand Oaks, say, Fifth Avenue in Manhattan, or even New York City, which has 85% of its zoning for multifamily, you'll see that high density does coexist with a lack of affordability. And we should be honest that if we're talking about affordability, market rate and zoning changes are not going to do anything in the absence of subsidized housing. They're not going to do anything other than result in more high-rent units that are not affordable to people like me or anyone else that needs an affordable place to live. And as the specific plan, as the general plan is being revised, and we're, and we're allowing for the construction of all these units, if these are market-rate units, then all we're going to see is Tio Boulevard become like a West Coast Fifth Avenue, or maybe a Ventura County equivalent of West Hollywood, and that's not going to be beneficial for anyone. It's not going to actually result in the construction of units that people like me can afford. And it's not going to bring down costs in the city in general. Cities have tried deregulation like this. You look at Seattle, you look at Boston, you look at New York City, and we just don't see the affordability with density unless it is subsidized and designated as affordable specifically. I don't think turning the city into West Hollywood or Fifth Avenue is going to help anyone.
Thank you, and this was our last speaker. I will now go back to Matt Ramey for any answers to questions or concerns raised.
Again, I am not sure I have any, are we gonna, Madam Mayor, are we gonna close here? Should I give some closing next steps at this point? Are there going to be city council, additional city council?
Well, the speakers raised several points, and I was asked to go back to you to address those points. If not, perhaps staff will do that.
Let me actually, I'll just jump in on a few. I think there were a lot of really good points. Without going into detail on specific ones, I think there were a lot of really good points and comments raised by the public. And it echoed a lot of what we've heard during the process about a desire for increased diversity in the city government, in the decision-making process, the desire for more people who work in the community to be able to live in the community, and also an appreciation for the way that the process, as it has evolved, and the way that staff over the most recent period of time has really been listening and responding to community members. So if there are specific questions, I can address those, but I definitely want to say it echoed a lot of what, a lot of what we have heard so far in the process.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any comments from staff? None?
No, I just think Mayor Bill de la Pena and Matt can probably follow on with this, that, yeah, there are next steps from this point. This was a study session tonight, and so this is about the continuing, continued listening process and sort of incorporating feedback from the public and from the city council as Matt works to refine this particular element of the general plan similarly to what we've done on the sustainability element and so on.
And, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I just, I would like to just say, I wanted to thank all of you on the council, city staff, and the public for participating in this. You know, we understand it's, it's not an easy conversation to have, and these are really emotional topics, as we heard from multiple community members. There are so many great ideas that came out of this, and so many ideas that can be incorporated into the plan based on what we've heard in the public comments this evening. And thank you to all the public for participating in this. I know it was a long, a long meeting, just, and the council meeting hasn't even started. And, you know, and our focus groups and all of the comments that we've received, and there's thousands of them. You know, we're really getting great, great feedback from the community, and I have no doubt that there will be a great plan that comes out of this where the community can really come together on figuring out the best path forward. So I just want to thank you all for your time this evening and for having this conversation and beginning the conversation, because that is really the most important aspect of it.
I agree with you that we heard some very good suggestions, not only this evening, but also through email that we are receiving regarding this particular topic. And I'm sure there will be policy changes or new policies created as a result of this element that will be to the benefit of the entire community. And certainly, we have, or mentioned inclusionary zoning a long, long time ago when I first started on the council, and it never went anywhere. You know, now is the time to look at that and, and other policies as well. And I see that Mayor Potem Engler has raised his hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a suggestion, as mentioned earlier, that this, we had not really seen this document before, you know, the preparation for this meeting. It might be beneficial to us all. I know that Councilmember MacDemy has asked for some training and some information on this. Would it be good to try to set up a secondary meeting with us to speak more on this, this topic, and perhaps even more directly on the housing element? Perhaps we can roll it into the housing element portion of our, our updates. But I, I for one, would like a little more exposure to these concepts and how perhaps we can incorporate some of the ideas that were brought forward from the public, as well as for my, for my colleagues.
Mr. Engler, are you asking for a study session offline or another public meeting?
I, I think, either way, I'm happy to have a study session offline with the Ramey group. If, if that works, we could do it on a one-on-one basis. I'm just trying to be sensitive to the time commitment that that would impose on staff and Mr. Ramey.
If I might offer, Madam Mayor, that we certainly could extend the offer for, for follow-on discussions, as was talked about with Councilmember MacDemy, for any council that would like to avail themselves on a discussion on this particular topic, or frankly, any of the topics that we're working through in the general plan process.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, I'd like to have that happen as well. We can do a study session offline with all of our council members there to address all our questions simultaneously. I think it's a great idea, Councilman Engler.
I'm going to look at the city attorney because of the Brown Act.
Yeah, no, it would either be a one-on-one meeting, or it would be a public meeting for a study session. City council members cannot meet in private, outside of the public arena.
So certainly, we can have one-on-one meetings. This is a very complex topic and something that we are trying to wrap our, our head around. And, but the, the exchange of information from the public is absolutely vital in this. And I have to say, if it weren't for the public pushing for certain changes and policy changes, we wouldn't be having Spanish translations and many other things. And, and I think it is important to show that we are, we want to be welcoming, and we want to be inclusive of every resident here in, in Thousand Oaks. So I also wanted to mention at the beginning, the presentation by Tim Giles, the training and some of the sessions that city employees are undertaking in terms of leadership skills, sensitivity training, inclusionary sort of videos, or that videos that are mentioning diversity and inclusion, and how they're really not the same. And, and perhaps it would be helpful to have council members do that as well. I actually checked out this particular program, I evolve, and there are hundreds or thousands even videos that can really be beneficial. And if it's good for staff, it's good for city council members. Mayor Potem Engler.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I was going to mention that I, I too have gone on that, that training site. It has training for just about any topic under the sun. And I would also recommend that my colleagues take a look at it. There's, there's, any topic you would want to delve into, there are, there are videos for you to peruse.
The city council members have to fulfill certain obligations required by the state, training about ethics and training about sexual harassment. So those are mandatory. And while I would welcome it if we had similar training for inclusivity, diversity, and all that, that would be mandatory. Certainly, in the least, you know, it should be voluntary participation in this sort of training. But that's something we can, we can discuss a little bit further down the road. So, Mr. Ramey, then the direction from the city council that you are seeking tonight is the feedback, right? Feedback. I think we need to incorporate all of these suggestions that have been presented so far by the public speakers, as well as the stakeholder meeting, and the comments made by council members. And I believe that the one-on-one meeting would And I believe that the one-on-one meeting would really be very helpful.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do those in the very near future. There's a lot of information to digest and a lot to go through.
Very good. Any other comments by my colleagues? Mr. Adam?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my hand has been up. First of all, I just want to say I want to compliment Lourdes for her translation abilities. Marvelous job. It's great that you're able to bring these stories to us in such a nice way. As to that last speaker about density, I understand what he's saying, but I do believe density allows for affordability. You have to have some market rate housing to allow for some affordable housing as well. The perfect example is the Kmart project proposal. Fifty affordable units are proposed for that particular project. So a lot depends on the city councils I discussed earlier and our resolve to make that happen. And especially if down the road we mandate it. So I think you can have affordable housing when it comes to density. And one theme that I picked up from all this, not all the speakers, but a number of the speakers, this business of overcrowding in our city, this is not good. This is not good for three families or 15 people to be crammed into one house or living in garages. This is bad for health. This is bad. This is a social ill that we really need to look at. It's bad for quality of life. And I would just say that if we continue on this course, it spreads COVID, for example, being all jammed in together like that. And that's the sacrifice people will make to live in our community, and they shouldn't have to make that sacrifice. At any rate, to me, you know, a little density could possibly solve that in some strategic locations within an affordable component and be far superior to people living on top of each other in a home here or an apartment or wherever it may be in the city of Thousand Oaks.
Well, Mr. Adam, yes, indeed. We are talking about very or extreme low income, and then there is moderate to low income. And workforce housing is in the upper category. And the residents who spoke tonight and shared their struggles with us really are to be commended for having the courage, first of all, to appear in a public forum, to share their struggle and not be afraid to say what their living conditions are like. And I want to use this opportunity to let residents in our community know who say we don't want low-income housing because it brings crime and traffic and lowers property values. We have had three community commitment award winners so far who have struggled, as was described this evening by others. And they, they're not criminals. They are not contributing to traffic because they don't own a car or maybe just one. These are good, decent, hardworking people that just want to make an honest living. And to say that the housing, the low-income housing will bring crime offends me. It really does. So I want to make sure that whatever housing policy we will come up with ensures that everybody will have a chance at decent accommodations and that any low-income units will really be deeded in a way that they cannot be turned over into market rate housing units at all. And we need to look at additional opportunities with our low-income housing provider, Many Mansions, to look at options. We have low-income housing along Hillcrest. You wouldn't even know that low-income families live in there because they're so well taken care of, well manicured. And, you know, it doesn't, you don't have to imagine some public project that you see in big cities in America. No, that's not what we're looking at. So I just would like for the attitude toward workforce housing and low-income housing to change in the city because it doesn't, it does not have to bring crime or anything like that. And I just wanted to get that off my chest. It's been bothering me for quite a bit.
Mayor, if I may. You know, when a builder proposes a market rate project, whether it's very low, low income, moderate income, that component, it's absolutely completely indistinguishable from the market rate units. And so it's not like that, you know, these units are segregated somewhere off by themselves, indistinguishable from the market rate units. And it's a great way for, to assimilate folks into the economy and to bring them up and give them a higher quality of life. And you're right, a lot of this business about affordability are myths, really. In reality, a lot of the fears just don't pencil out, as you mentioned about traffic. I mean, if you want to talk about traffic, you know, my neighbor across the street has five cars parked in front of his house. I live in the classic suburban neighborhood. That's where a lot of the traffic comes from. But anyway, that's a whole other, a whole other issue, and I don't want to drag all that.
Well, I will say that high-density projects will bring traffic. There's no doubt about that. But I do really not agree that they will bring crime necessarily. And I think that is something.
Absolutely not. Crime comes from people being jammed in together, living a stressful life, you know? And that can breed violence potentially, not living in a, you know, brand-new, affordable unit within a market rate housing project.
And then, of course, when we discuss this, we also need to address homelessness. The majority of our homeless residents are not minority, ethnic or racial minorities. And they are former residents of Thousand Oaks, former by saying that they used to live in an apartment or a house and are no longer. And that is, that is really what we need to address as well, the homelessness issue with this sec equity and social justice, including mental health, of course. All right, so.
That's a good point, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt you. That's a good point. We didn't talk about that tonight, but that's a housing crisis in itself.
It is.
Our homeless population. And, you know, I'm personally convinced we need permanent supportive housing here in the city, and I think we're going to get there eventually. But, you know, it's not environmental justice to have people living, you know, underneath the freeway.
Correct. It isn't.
So that's, that's another big issue that I know we're working towards a solution.
And we are indeed. Are there any other comments by my colleagues or perhaps staff? I'm looking for raised hands. Mr. Jones?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
You know, it's so sad to be, for me to listen to this particularly about housing. I mean, I, the reason I ever got into government was to solve problems. If I didn't think I could solve people's problems and make a difference, I never would have run for anything. And to sit here and, you know, with this force of economics, we can't repeal the law of supply and demand, can we? I'm sorry that housing is subject to these forces of rising prices. I mean, wouldn't it have been nice if we could have just kept them out of the supply and demand market? And we couldn't do that, obviously. What I'm trying to say is my entire takeaway from tonight's exercise is that all the things we can do, we should make sure that we do. We should have equity. We should have fairness. We should respect the truth. We should have, work, you know, with our staff and with all the other agencies to make sure that everything is fair and open and people advance on merit. And we have, give people a hand where they need it. And there should be no racism whatsoever. It shouldn't be, we wouldn't, we shouldn't even have the word because we don't believe in it. But when we get into housing, I mean, that is such a, such a difficult problem. I mean, you can't tell somebody that if he's owned a house for many years that he can't sell it for what the market would pay for it. I mean, it's so, we can't, you know, I think it's something we can't do about, anything about. But what do we can do? Well, that's right. Mr. Adam is correct. We can have a certain amount of affordable or low-income housing. But even low-income housing would not satisfy the farmworkers or the, you know, people that clean houses and mow lawns and so forth. Even, you know, and there are very few that are very low income. But just low income is like $85,000 a year. I mean, I'm kind of rambling here, but I don't, I haven't seen a clear path. I'd like to have somebody phone me and say, I'm having trouble with this or I'm having trouble with that, and I try to solve that problem right away. It's, it's my MO. I'm not always successful, but I try. But I don't like to get a problem that I don't see an answer to, you know? This seems very hard to me, at any rate, to make a significant success out of trying to achieve low-income housing. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Now, we do have a responsibility, moral and social responsibility to do that, to provide housing. Whether we will be successful remains to be seen, but certainly we will try our darndest. My question is, for all of the different elements of the general plan, will they be accompanied by, for example, the forestry element, the circulation element? Are they accompanied by a resolution? That's a question for staff.
Are you asking, do we adopt a resolution to adopt each element? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, like the forestry element, the circulation element. Is each element encapsulated in form of a resolution?
So in past practice, since we've never done a comprehensive general plan update, we've just had council adopt those individual elements. In this case, however, city council will be adopting the entire comprehensive general plan update. Whether or not you want to adopt it via resolution, I'm not aware if we do that or not. I'm looking at Matt, whether cities adopted by resolution or do they just adopt the general plan?
I've seen it both ways. And I think we can get back on that. But typically, it is the entire general plan in its entirety and not element by element because the idea of a comprehensive update is to do it all together.
Correct.
Okay, so the entire general plan update, since it is comprehensive, will need to have a resolution?
It doesn't need to have a resolution. Again, because the document speaks for itself. But there's nothing that prohibits you from adopting a resolution in addition to the general plan. There's nothing that prevents you from doing that legally.
Okay, well, each element has a little booklet. Everything is spelled out, all of the different components of it. And I seem to recall that there are, there was a resolution somewhere, and I'm trying to remember whether it was the forestry element. There was a social element in there as well, I think. I'm trying to remember. But not knowing exactly where the general plan will go, I mean, there are calls for residents, residents, some of them are calling for a public vote on this plan. But should, should the plan not, the general plan not include a resolution that would mention especially the new elements? We also will have arts and culture, but spell out specifically what each element does.
Right, well, in each element, obviously, there's, you know, it's kind of like a chapter of a book. So in each chapter, there's going to be, you know, there's, first of all, there'll be an executive summary to the entire general plan. And then each chapter will also have an introductory paragraph or two explaining what each element does. And then in that element will be background information, you know, data. And then also ultimately will include goals and policies that are adopted as part of that particular element.
Okay, so then, say, for example, the equity, social, environmental justice and equity element, we could spell out specific statements as to what we expect this element to be. Namely, we want, say, a community liaison with different organizations in town, whether it's the underrepresented or disabled or so forth. Is that something that we can then spell out to show that we take this issue very seriously and will, and do not condone any sort of racism or anything like that?
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, and I'll let Matt chime in on this as well. What they're, what they're, what every single element, whether it's the economic development element or cultural affairs element, they're taking all this feedback that's received. And then Matt and his team work to synthesize that information and help the council to create the actionable policy-related items that are attached to it. So to the extent of the example you gave, absolutely, that's something that could unfold again. Matt, is that appropriate?
Yeah, I think the simplest way to think about this is that every element is going to have goals, which are the long-term direction and what you want to achieve. They're going to have policies, which are the things that are being done on an ongoing basis that implement the goals. And then there's actions, which are specific activities that you're going to do. So if you're going to hire a new position to do something, to be a liaison, that would be an action. And then that would tie in with the capital improvement program and annual budgets to make sure that that is being implemented. And then you can go back over time and look at that. And yes, it would be adopted in its entirety as a general plan for all of the elements. And then, once the plan is adopted, you then start implementing it. That's where the fun begins.
Right. Very good. Thank you. That answers my question. Excellent. All right, any other comments? Then, we are not really looking for a vote here. This was a receive and file, basically. And with that, I want to thank Matt Ramey and associates very much for the hard work you put into this in bringing and introducing this element to the city of Thousand Oaks. Want to thank city staff and look forward to another discussion on this. All right. Thank you. We will go to item B now, 9B, and that is citywide user fees, fines, penalties, rates, assessments, and so forth. And that will be introduced by our finance director, Jamie Moscarino. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Share my screen. All right. Good evening, Mayor Biddleup and you, city council members. Tonight, we are here to hold a study session on the draft fiscal year 2021-22 and fiscal year 2022-23 user fees and development impact fees. Also here tonight is Brent Sakaida, our budget officer, who works diligently on this with each department and preparing our draft user fees, as well as our consultant Chad Wolford, who led us through the user fees update and the cost of services study. There we go. The purpose of tonight's user fee study session is to review what a user fee is, including other various fee types that are included in the user fees manual, as well as provide an overview on the document and the process that staff undertook to develop the draft user fees manual, including the proposed changes in fees for the next two fiscal years. We will be reviewing the results of the cost of services study as well. This is a study session, so this is the opportunity for both city council and the public to provide input on the draft user fees manual prior to the public hearing in April. Tonight kicks off the start of the city's fiscal year 2021-22 and fiscal year 22-23 biannual budget process presentation. biennial budget process presentations to city council. Over the next few months, we will hold multiple study sessions to review user fees, CIP budget and operating budget, prior to holding public hearings for adoption of the user fees and budgets. Tonight may be the first study session, however, staff have been developing the user fees since May of last year, when the cost of services study kicked off. This has been an in-depth and comprehensive process comprising staff from almost all departments. The draft user fee manual includes 256 fees with approximately 650 subcomponent fee items. The fees comprise both development-related user fees as well as non-development-related user fees. The draft user fees were presented to the finance audit committee for review and discussion on March 8. Before we dive into the draft user fee manual, it's important to define what exactly is a user fee, which is distinctly different than a tax. In November 2010, the public voted on and approved Proposition 26, which specifically defined what constituted a tax. The proposition defined a tax as any levy, charge, or exaction of any kind imposed by a local government that doesn't meet one of seven exceptions set forth in Proposition 26. Whereas a fee, on the other hand, is charged to an individual or a group that actually receives a private benefit from the service that is provided. For example, the operation of the city's library is a community benefit. The services of the library is paid for with property taxes that are levied annually. A homeowner pays their property taxes, which go to fund the city's library. The library also has user fees, though, that are included in this draft manual presented tonight, that are only paid by individuals or groups that actually receive a benefit or service from that fee that they pay, such as renting a meeting room at the library or using a copier at the library. It's important to note the difference between the two, as taxes can only be approved by a vote of the people, either by a simple majority for a general tax or a two-thirds majority of a special tax. However, fees can be approved by a two-thirds vote of city council. As mentioned, there are seven exceptions to a tax in Proposition 26. The first exception is for a specific benefit or privilege, an example of which is a fee charged for a restricted parking permit, for instance, such as for those residents that live over by CLU. The second exception is for a specific government service or product, which is a charge only paid by individuals that request that specific service. The library photocopying fee I just mentioned is a good example of this type of exception. The regulatory charges exception is a fee charged to regulate a specific business, such as taxi operators, as staff incurs costs to ensure that the business meets specific regulatory requirements and issue licenses. The fourth is user charges, which is a charge for the use of or entrance to a government property, such again as the rental of a library meeting room. The fifth are fines and penalties, parking citations, for instance. The sixth is developer charges, which are charges imposed as a condition of development, such as a plan check fee or building permit fee, as well as our development impact fees. And the seventh exception is the benefit assessments and property-related charges, which are governed by Proposition 218. This includes the city's lighting and landscape assessment districts, as well as the water and wastewater utility rates. In order for a fee to actually be considered a fee and not a tax and able to be approved by city council, it must meet one of those seven exceptions we just covered. It must also be based on the cost of service provided. The government cannot make money off of fees, we can only recover our costs. It must specifically benefit those who pay the charge. It must not unintentionally be subsidized. And we do have several fees that are intentionally subsidized, as we will cover in a minute, but we can't unintentionally subsidize fees. And the way you ensure this is by undertaking a cost of services study periodically, which we will review next. It also must be reasonable. A good way to ensure reasonableness is by periodically benchmarking fees against other agencies. And it must not be arbitrary. There has to be a basis for charging the amount of the fee. These are all important concepts to remember when we are setting fees. Fiscal sustainability is an overarching goal of the city that permeates through all aspects of our operations and decisions, and user fees is no different. With the city council goal of adjusting fees biannally to achieve full cost recovery, we aim to ensure that fee revenue that provides a user with a specific benefit or privilege covers the city cost of providing those services. For any fee that is not set at full cost recovery, we are thus relying on taxpayer revenues to subsidize the cost of those services, leaving less tax revenue available for services that benefit the community, such as public safety. So how do we ensure that our fees are based on the cost of service, are reasonable, are not unintentionally subsidized, are not arbitrary? We do that by performing a cost of services study periodically. Staff issued a request for proposals at the end of 2019. Our evaluation committee comprised of staff from multiple departments evaluated the qualified proposers, and we ultimately selected Wolford Consulting based on the experience, expertise, quality, references, price, and familiarity with our city services. A comprehensive cost of services study kicked off in May 2020 for planning, code compliance, and engineering user fees. All development-related fees were last comprehensively reviewed in 2013 with a full cost of service study. A cost of services study for building will be completed in time for the next user fee study in 2023. The city has been without a building official for the past year, combined with COVID compliance obligations. Staff felt it was best at this time to postpone the study on building. Why do a cost of services study? Back to those fee concepts I mentioned, reasonableness, not unintentionally subsidizing fees, not arbitrarily setting fees, and ensuring that you're not overcharging for fees. Over the course of time, many things may change regarding how the city provides certain services. Staffing levels change, technology changes, processes may become more efficient as a result, laws and regulations change, which may require some services to be processed quicker, such as processing a solar permit. While it may make others more complex and take longer, building codes change. The result is, after time, it makes sense to perform a new cost of services study. The study is performed in conjunction with a consultant that is experienced in evaluating and calculating the cost of services and is aware of legislative changes and requirements. And that's where Wolford Consulting steps in with the city, as they are experts in this field. The process includes taking a comprehensive look at staffing costs, time estimates of providing the service, overhead, and activity levels. Fees are evaluated as to the rationale, the fairness, compliance with current laws, whether the fee is still needed, and additionally, are there new fees that the city should be charging? For example, the city installed multiple electric charging stations across the city and needed a user fee in order to be able to charge the public for utilizing the chargers. The goal of the cost of services study is ultimately to know and understand what the full cost is of city staff providing these services, so that we are not unknowingly subsidizing service costs. Mr. Wolford met regularly with city staff, starting in May, in order to develop a comprehensive understanding of how the city provides planning, code, and engineering services to the public. The results of the 2021 development-related fee summary showed that a majority of development-related fees for planning, code, and engineering services are below full cost recovery. Although our goal is to be at full cost recovery, since that would lead to a large increase in some fees, our current strategy is to increase selected development-related fees by a percentage or CPI biannally to get closer to full cost recovery. The CPI of 4.46% is based on the United States Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Los Angeles Riverside, Orange County, for all expenditure categories calculated from December 2018 to December 2020. The cost of services study also identified several fees that exceeded the current cost of service and are actually being recommended to decrease. The city has a culture of process improvement and empowers staff to identify and recommend changes and processes that will streamline our services. We are continuously evaluating our services and identifying areas for improvement. Most notable is the recent kickoff of our new cutting-edge land management system, which will greatly improve how we provide planning, building, and engineering services, from electronic plans to middle and review processes to virtual inspections in some cases. In addition, there are 16 fees that city council in the past has specifically provided as exceptions to full cost recovery. Diving into the results of the cost of services study, this chart highlights the full cost recovery of services based on the cost of services study, the revenue projected based on activity levels and current fees. And you can see by looking at the chart that the cost recovery percentage rate in that sixth column for current costs, current fees versus full cost recovery. Engineering is currently at 67.6% cost recovery, planning is at 41.2%, and code is at 36.5%. With our proposed fee adjustments, this increases the cost recovery rate to 91.8% for engineering, 52.2% for planning, and 39% for code. The proposed fee adjustments bring engineering services to almost full cost recovery. These are mostly services that are provided for developers and construction projects. Planning services would increase to over 52% cost recovery based on these proposed adjustments. The difference between planning cost recovery rate and engineering is primarily because most of the fees that are city council exceptions to full cost recovery are in planning, and many fees are paid for by homeowners for residential projects. The goal is, over several user fee updates, adjustments will be made at a rate greater than the CPI in order to bring these fees closer to full cost recovery. Code fees have the largest subsidy and the lowest cost recovery rate at 39% for proposed adjustments. This is primarily because the goal is to obtain compliance of code violations and less on monetarily penalizing the violator. Although not included in the full cost of services study this time, I wanted to show the results based on the 2013 study for building fees. Based on full cost recovery in 2013 in comparison to our current fees, building fees are at 67% full cost recovery. The main reason for being under full cost recovery based on the 2013 study is because increases have been implemented at CPI and not at a higher rate in order to get closer to full cost recovery, and this is true across the board for all fee divisions. City council established a policy about two decades ago that certain fees are not to be at full cost recovery. As mentioned, there are 16 fees that city council decided are the exception. Fees that are of a community-wide benefit and fees where the use of tax revenue would be appropriate for community-wide service are some of those that city council specified as the exception. Fee exception policies vary across cities and are not always easy to identify. Each city is unique and may prioritize certain fees to subsidize. Oak trees are important in Thousand Oaks, for instance, and we subsidize our oak trees. The next two slides provide the list of the 16 fees that city council has established as exception to full cost recovery. The full cost of the fee, the current fee, and the proposed fee amounts are included for reference. Those fees that are being proposed to increase are increasing based on CPI or the user fee cost study. Lines six and seven, the oak landmark tree minor and major mods are actually being proposed to be removed from the user fees. The fees that have the largest difference between full cost recovery and the proposed are the appeal fees. Again, this was a past decision by city council to subsidize the appeal fees, and we regularly get requests to actually waive the fee entirely. I mentioned earlier that one way to evaluate whether or not fees are reasonable is to compare the fee to other cities. Although it is important to include the comparison of Thousand Oaks' fees to other cities in the area, I want to stress that it is not comparing apples to apples. There are many things that make it difficult to compare fees, which are listed here. Staffing levels and pay are different. There may be different policies on subsidization. The fee study may be older, or in the case of our building, fee study newer. A different methodology or cost basis may be used, such as valuation versus square footage. How the service is provided may be different. For example, since Thousand Oaks values oak trees, staff time is spent on evaluating a project in part on its impact oak trees, whereas that evaluation is not done in other cities. So while it's important to compare fees, it's equally important to understand the limitations in doing so. With that understanding in mind, we did provide fee comparisons of several fees. Our comparison cities are Ventura, Santa Clarita, Oxnard, Simi Valley, Camarillo, and Moore Park. You can see fees vary widely across cities and how difficult it is to truly compare fees. The fees on this slide and the next are the public works fees with the highest activity level. In other words, these are the fees that public works most often charge for services they are providing. Highlighting the public-private improvement inspection, you can see how difficult it is to compare fees, since Thousand Oaks' fee is based on square footage while others are based on valuation. Some fees aren't included in every city, which is why you might see none listed. We are just including the fees that the city sees the most activity in. There are potentially fees that other cities charge that Thousand Oaks doesn't as well. Part of our review is to see if Thousand Oaks is an outlier in any fees, but also understanding the complexities in comparison, and there may be reasons for being an outlier. Some of our fees are on a deposit basis, considering the fact that our particular review may be simple in nature or may be complex. By collecting a deposit on the higher end upfront, we ensure we have adequate deposit to pay for the time and materials costs. Those fee payers that have a simpler review would receive a refund of the difference between actual time and materials in their deposit. Starting on this slide, we cover planning fees. Again, it's clear that fees vary widely across cities. A general plan amendment is a fee charge in all of the comparison cities, with the fee ranging from a low of 5,700 in Moore Park, if you don't consider the Simi Valley 4,975 pre-screen fee, to a high of 19,855 in Santa Clarita. This type of fee can vary greatly in its complexity and staff time required to process a general plan amendment, which is why the city, our city establishes a fee based on a deposit. Some additional planning fees, and again, there's a wide variance in fees charged, and looking at the specific plan fee from no fee in Santa Clarita to 50,297 in Camarillo. Thousand Oaks charges a $10,000 deposit. So here, we're actually looking at estimated plan check costs for a single-family 4,000-square-foot house, a 54,000-square-foot apartment complex, and a 90,000-square-foot industrial shell building construction. Some fees are based on square footage, and some fees in cities are based on valuation. So fees are shown for the cities using the method that they employ. For a single-family residential home of this size or valuation, fees range from a low of 1,680 in Ventura to a high of 4,857 in Santa Clarita. Thousand Oaks is at 3,859. For an apartment complex, fees range from a low of 10,383 in Simi Valley to a high of 50,932 in Santa Clarita. Thousand Oaks is at 17,586. For an industrial shell building, fees range from a low of 10,371 in Camarillo to a high of 32,877 in Santa Clarita, and Thousand Oaks is at 12,268. Based on plan check fees, Thousand Oaks is at the lower end of the range for both apartment and industrial shell buildings. Doing the same type of comparison, but on building permit costs, single-family dwelling ranges from a low of 2,068 in Ventura to a high of 5,102 in Santa Clarita. Thousand Oaks is at 4,540. Apartment complex ranges from a low of 12,069 in Camarillo to a high of 48,137 in Santa Clarita, and Thousand Oaks is at 20,689. And industrial shell building ranges from a low of 14,307 in Camarillo to a high of 31,278 in Santa Clarita. Thousand Oaks is at 14,443. As again, again, Thousand Oaks is on the lower end for both apartment and industrial building permit fees. Moving to the actual draft user fee manual, the manual is composed of development and non-development fees. The fees cover services from each department, such as various building permit fees and rentals of city facilities. Developer charges are also included, such as development impact fees, which are governed under the Mitigation Fee Act, AB 1600. Fines and penalties, rates and charges for water and wastewater utilities, and assessments for lighting and landscaping are also included. The draft manual is broken out into two different sections. The first section includes a fee detail sheet for each user fee. The fee detail sheet includes such information as the fee title, the department, the fee structure, and the specific Proposition 26 exception. This sheet would also specify if someone other than city council had the authority to waive a fee. For almost all fees, only city council can approve a waiver. However, for a few fees, the fee detail sheet might list the department director as having authority to waive a fee, such as the library director may waive library authority to waive a fee such as the library director may waive library fines. The second section of the manual includes the comparison of the 2019 adopted user fees to the 2021 draft user fees. In addition to undergoing the cost of services study, staff has reviewed the current user fees and any changes in services and developing the draft user fees for both development and non-development user fees. So next, we're going to review changes in fees included in the draft. For public works department fees, there are sixty-seven current fees. There are two new fees being proposed. One was previously approved by city council in December 2019, the electric vehicle charging fee. And there's also an addition of a trash enclosure and organic science fee. Recommendation is to eliminate three fees, a time extension fee, a groundwater service charge fee and a senior dial ride card. Thirty-five fees are recommended for an increase to get closer to full cost recovery with three fees being recommended for a decrease so we do not exceed full cost recovery. In the community development department, planning and code compliance fees, there are five new fees, accessory dwelling unit fee, CCNR review, pre-post project review, compliance and monitoring fees and a time extension fee. Eighteen fees are recommended to be eliminated for various reasons, including fees that are never charged, fees that were combined into other fees. Forty-nine fees are recommended to be increased to get closer to full cost recovery with ten fees recommended to be decreased in order to not exceed full cost recovery. Again, I want to reiterate that several fees on city councils' full cost recovery exception list are included in CDD, so some fees are not being recommended to be increased. In CDD, building fees, there is one new fee in after-hours construction permit fee. Fourteen fees are recommended to be increased in CPI to get closer to full cost recovery. Building fees, again, were not included in the cost of services study, which is why the recommendation is to only increase by CPI. A full cost of services study will be performed in two years for the next user fees update. Twelve fees are not changing due to them either being set by the county based on time and materials or based on valuation. Non-development fees are next. There are no changes to city clerk fees. Citywide fees, there is one new fee, a film location fee. For cultural affairs, there is adjustments to eight fees. One new fee component adding a COVID-19 compliance officer in order to ensure performances are in compliance with COVID-19 restrictions and safety measures. The elimination of a miscellaneous rental fee. In finance, there are minor decreases to four fees. Eliminated the resident golf card fee as that program is now handled at the golf course and not the city. And also the credit card transaction fee as the city does not collect the fee. It's a convenience fee that will be charged by our payment processor directly. The library department is recommending the elimination of two fees, the overdue materials fee and the scanning fee. Library customers would still need to return the item and we would still charge the full replacement value if the item is lost or damaged. In libraries where overdue fines were eliminated, they actually see the rate of return increase as borrowers are less concerned about having to pay a fine for an overdue material. Both Ventura County Library System and Simi Valley Public Library went fine-free last year and have seen a positive experience in doing so. For police fees, there is a minor adjustment to four fees to increasing and to decreasing. A new illegal fireworks fee is being added and although the county has an illegal fireworks ordinance in place, the city does not have one and so we do not have the ability currently to find the violation. We are also proposing to eliminate the bicycle license fee. Also included in our user fee manual are development impact fees. These are fees that are governed by the mitigation fee act, AB sixteen hundred, and are charged to new development to pay for the required capital improvement infrastructure costs arising from a development project. Fees include road and traffic fees, water and wastewater plant improvement and connection fees and facility fees. Per AB sixteen hundred, the city annually reports to the city council the revenue and expenditures associated with the development impact fees. If for some reason the city did not utilize the fees collected for an infrastructure improvement project, the fee is required to be refunded to the developer. Public Works recently completed the traffic to impact fees nexus study in April 2019. These road and traffic fees will increase by the construction content cost index. The water and wastewater plant improvement and connection fees were adopted by city council in October 2020, so those are not being adjusted at this time. And the police facilities fee is being adjusted by one point five percent per the fee resolution. Staff is currently in the process of working with its consultant to update the water and wastewater financial plans and develop rates for calendar year 2022 and 2023. Staff will return to city council this summer fall with the draft financial plans and rates. Rate development and approval is governed under proposition two eighteen. The city has both lighting and landscaping assessment districts. A separate report is prepared annually and brought to city council each spring with proposed assessments and we will be doing that later this year. And just to recap what we covered tonight, I want to emphasize that the goal is to be at full cost recovery so that the general taxpayer is not subsidizing services that are a private benefit to an individual or group. And while we are not at that point, the goal is again to move towards full cost recovery with engineering achieving full cost recovery in two years and recommending greater than CPI increases in planning fees over the next couple biennial user fees updates. We have made improvements in efficiencies and efficiencies in service, which is reflected in several fees being recommended for a decrease tonight. We adhere to best practices and standards in developing our cost of services study and our user fees. Staff spent a significant amount of time evaluating services as part of this update and study and I want to thank all departments, but especially the community development and public works departments for their time spent over the past ten months. Tonight's recommendations are to receive the information on the user fees and police facilities fee as presented and provide any direction to staff as well as schedule a public hearing for April twenty-seventh, 2021 to hear the final user fees adjustments. I would be happy to answer any questions and staff from other departments are also present and available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Wow, that was quite the report. Very detailed, lots of stuff to cover. I do have some questions, but I will go to my colleagues first. Let's see who would like to chime in. If nobody would like to chime in, then I will ask a question about the deposit for the specific plan which was on one of your slides. It says ten thousand dollar deposit. What, how, how will that be charged after the deposit is, is made?
I think I'll let Mr. Parker answer that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bostarino. Madam Mayor, staff time is billed to that project on an hour-by-hour basis. So the intent of it is to get full cost recovery for staff time in processing that application. Staff time is charged against that deposit until it is exhausted, in which case we would ask for additional funds to replace it to continue processing.
So how, how much can a specific plan actually end up costing?
Each specific plan is different and it just depends on the level of difficulty and the work that goes into each specific plan. It could cost ten thousand dollars or there's been instances of some recently that have cost as much as twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so it is full cost recovery?
That is the intent of billing against the deposit.
Okay. All right. And then if I could get some clarification on the COVID inspector for theaters, since I think we have Mr. Jonathan Saret here.
Yes, Madam Mayor. To clarify on the COVID-19 compliance officer that's being added to the theater's compendium, that is a position that's a requirement of the industry currently for commercial television and film in order to resume their operations safely. Essentially, it's a certified COVID-19 compliance officer who's aware of the different social distancing and hygiene measures that need to be undertaken to perform safely. At this point, because we don't know what the guidance will look like for indoor or live events to resume, we've added this on to the, the compendium for the theaters. So that way, as, as events move forward, if they're in a hybrid situation, we can provide that, that position for productions that come into the theater and don't carry their own staff. There's no mandatory requirement that, that position would need to be filled by our staff. So if a visiting company or one of our resident companies, for instance, were to use the theater, if they have their own COVID-19 compliance officer who is certified, that would suffice for us and we would not require them to use one of our staff.
Thank you. I'm glad you clarified that because when I saw that, I thought, oh, well, we don't want to incur any additional costs to the already struggling nonprofit arts organizations. So I'm glad you clarified that. I see that Mr. Adam has his hand up.
Pardon me, Mayor. Yeah, if there's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I believe staff is moving slowly but surely to full cost recovery in all departments. I appreciate the exhaustive study. I know that, you know, a lot of people participated in this and, and even though we moved closer and closer to full cost recovery, if I got my numbers right, sixty percent of the fees either were not changed, decreased or deleted. So we're going towards full cost recovery, but we're still being reasonable with what we charge. So with that, I'd like to move on nine B. We accept the user fee report and we schedule a public hearing in April, I think it is.
April twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Hello?
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute. Am I unmuted?
You're, you're good.
I'm, I'm voting aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Your microphone, Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Pinha?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, that motion carries five zero.
Excellent. At ten oh eight, we now move on to item B, ten, I'm sorry, ten A, which is a department report about Rancho Potrero Community Equestrian Center and the transfer involving the Brimhall Library. And this will be introduced by the Human Resources Director, Tim Giles. Good evening again.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to see if I can start the presentation here. As the mayor mentioned, this evening, we are able to talk about the Rancho Potrero Community Equestrian Center. This project gives us an opportunity to spotlight one of the wonderful partnerships that we have here with the city. The city and the Canaia Recreation Park District have partnered on many great events for the benefit of the community. One of them is the Joint Powers Authority for the Canaia Open Space Conservation Agency. And that provides a great access to open space for our residents. And as an outgrowth of this partnership on, on land that is, is owned by the Canaia Open Space Conservation Agency, we have a community equestrian center that is offered for the benefit of our, our equestrian unit, community. Just to give you a, a, idea of where the facility is located or where Rancho Potrero is, is located, just to orient you, this is off of Lynn Road to the south of Dos Fiantos and to the west of the National Park Service. This entire area is, is open space that is preserved by COSCA. You'll notice in the upper right-hand corner that there is a, an area in tan. That is the area that is operated as an equestrian center and is the land that, that we will be talking about this evening.
Mr. Giles, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but I need Mr. Kevin McNamie, Councilmember McNamie, to announce a recusal due to conflict. Could we do that real quickly?
Sure, I was going to say that out of politeness to the end of this presentation, but yes, I need to recuse myself when we vote because of personal interest there in the equestrian center.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Giles, go ahead.
And in deference to the hour, I was just out of the blocks a little too fast there. Thank you. Just talk a little bit of the history of this site. Some of you are probably aware. The Rancho Potrero open space was brought into public ownership back in nineteen ninety-three. We were partnering with the Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority. At that point in time, this land was outside the city's jurisdiction and being able to partner with our extended open space partners was very beneficial to us. Also in nineteen ninety-three, the Canaia Open Space Trails Advisory Council, at the city's request, brought a recommendation looking at equestrian issues in our community. And one of their recommendations was that the equestrian center should be cited on the Rancho Potrero property that was being acquired. In nineteen ninety-five, the city leased an area of that, that COSCA purchase for an equestrian center and was able to relocate a private two-wins ranch to that current site. The two-wins ranch was operating on the north side of land in an area that was slated for development as part of the Dos Fiantos development. In two thousand and three, the city invested approximately two million dollars in site infrastructure construction, in putting in roads, below-ground infrastructure and a couple of barns that would support the equestrian center usage. As the city completed those infrastructure, the city went out in a competitive request for proposals process to look for private equestrian center operators who, who were successful in operating public equestrian centers to be able to come in and to operate this facility as well as to add improvements, including arenas and stalls that would have been necessary for the, for the operation of the facility. The city selected Circle K, who, who did operate other public facilities. They, they came in and operated that facility for over ten years. In twenty nineteen, the city terminated the Circle K lease and entered, entered into a temporary partnership with a local nonprofit, Ride On, who also provides equestrian center services. They have a facility that is on land owned by our partner CRPD here in the Canaia Valley where they operate a therapeutic writing program. They were well-known in the community and had demonstrated their ability to come in and assist the city in evaluating the site, determining what deferred maintenance issues needed to be addressed, what improvements were needed to, to bring the, the facility up to a current standard and to look at operating alternatives to make sure that the facility could operate on a successful basis. With the information that the city and Ride On were able to put together, the council appointed a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee to advise staff on how to proceed in identifying a permanent long-term operation for the equestrian facility. As we met with the council ad hoc committee, they identified the fact that CRPD provides a much better alignment of skills to provide the services that are, are provided by the equestrian center. They are used to having recreational programming. They have the history of working with, with Ride On and having a, a, an equestrian center operating on their land and would be able to align the operations with that expertise where the city did not really have that, that same equestrian expertise or that type of programming expertise. Also, the, by partnering with CRPD, the facility has an improved opportunity to provide education opportunities and programming that benefits the rest of our community. Young people as well as the broader community would have an opportunity to be exposed to and develop an interest and love for equestrian activities, which was really one of the benefits that, that the city saw in originally partnering to, to locate the, the equestrian center at this location. locate the equestrian center at this location. The ad hoc committee eventually met with an ad hoc committee of the CRPD Board of Directors on elements of the transaction and were able to come up with the terms of the transactions that we present for your consideration tonight. At the risk of taking a really difficult, complex transaction and oversimplifying it, the primary changes that would be taking place through this transaction is that CRPD would become the sole owner and responsible for everything associated with the equestrian facility. And the city would receive the land underlying the Grand Hall Brimhall Library, which the city owns and is operating. Now, let me dive into those a little bit deeper and talk about some of the details of the transactions. When it comes to the community equestrian center, currently, the land is owned by COSCA. And remember, COSCA is a Joint Powers Authority between the city and CRPD. And then that land is in turn leased to the city. So through this transaction, the land would be transferred to CRPD. COSCA would be relieved of any oversight responsibilities for the land. CRPD would be able to provide the operation of the equestrian center unencumbered. The improvements that are at the facility are currently owned by the city. And as the owner of those improvements, the maintenance obligation and any deficiencies in improvements is currently the obligation of the city. This transaction would transfer the title to those improvements to the Park and Rec District. Park and Rec District would assume maintenance obligations, and the city would provide grants over a multiple-year period totaling $960,000 to assist with a partial, to assist CRPD in partially funding the improvements that are needed. CRPD would also be providing a development on COSCA property. And this is a blow-up of an insert from the Rancho Potrero overview that we had on the first slide. If you notice in the lower left-hand corner of the slide, under number one, in the purple, there is an Olympia Farms site. This is a historic farm site that is located on the Rancho Potrero property. The specific plan for COSCA calls out for the development of a development at this location. This development would not be any structures, would not be any buildings. It would be an irrigated walnut grove, which would be appropriate for trail access from the equestrian center so that riders from the equestrian center could go on an easy trail ride to this location for educational meetings, or perhaps picnics, or other events of that type. CRPD, after this transaction, would take on the development responsibility for that grove and create that complimentary picnic and education site that would go along with the equestrian center. And then the final piece of property that is involved in this transaction is the Brimhall Library. As I think council is aware, the entire land underlying not only the library, but the teen center and the adult center, and Caneo Creek North Park area, is all owned by CRPD. The city and CRPD have worked in cooperation for the last 30 years in making sure that complementary services are provided at those facilities. With regard to the library, that land is owned by CRPD. The city built, owns, and operates the library. So after this proposed transaction, the city would actually acquire the land underlying the library that it currently and would continue to own and operate. Part of this transaction will require the parties to get together to work out methodologies to make sure that we maintain compatible uses, that we have a continuation of the partnership in terms of access, reciprocal use, those kinds of issues, which would be typical of a larger development that functions as a single complex of public buildings. And so the public would not see any kind of separation here, but they would continue to work as they do at the current time. I just want to very quickly go over the recommendations in the staff report, so that if there's any questions on those, we can address those. Number one is to adopt a city council resolution authorizing execution of amendments to recorded documents and bond disclosure relating to the outstanding Thousand Oaks Public Financing Authority 2020 Refunding Lease Revenue Bonds. That's municipal facilities projects. Recommendation number two is to adopt a 40 resolution authorizing execution of amendments to recorded documents related to the outstanding 2020 Refunding Lease Revenue Bonds on the municipal facilities projects. Recommendation number three is to authorize the city manager to execute the following agreements in substantial conformity with the drafts attached to the staff report. A, an agreement between the City of Thousand Oaks and Caneo Recreation and Park District and the Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency to transfer ownership of the Rancho Potrero Equestrian Center and related matters. B, agreement between the City of Thousand Oaks and Caneo Recreation and Park District to terminate lease agreement 594 relating to the Grand Hall Brimhall Library site. Assignment and assumption agreement of the interim memorandum of understanding between the City of Thousand Oaks and RideOn LA for the operation of the Rancho Potrero Community Equestrian Center. D, agreement between the City of Thousand Oaks and the Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency to terminate the lease of the Rancho Potrero Community Equestrian Center and related matters. And number four, recommendation number four, approved budget appropriation and expenditure in the amount of $480,000 from account number 56100003111000, the Dos Fiantos Developer Fund balance, to account number 56135916715920, the equestrian center grants. And there's a supplemental report provided to you today with an additional recommendation to authorize the city manager to take such steps, execute such additional documents, and correct such documents as necessary to effectuate the approved transactions. Staff is available to answer any of your questions. In addition to myself, Gary Rogers, Deputy City Manager, and Jamie Boscarino, Finance Director, are available. Tom Hare from the Caneo Recreation and Park District is also available to answer your question. And Brian McQueeney from the RideOn is available, and I believe desires to speak to this item. And with that, I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Giles. This is the culmination of three years of hard work by not only city staff, but also CRPD staff, and really appreciate that this is coming to a conclusion, and I think to a very successful conclusion. As Mr. Giles mentioned, we do have some other persons here involved in these transactions who may or may not want to speak. But if there are any questions, if my council colleagues have any questions, they certainly will, they will be available to answer. Any questions? I don't see any hands up, so that means that somebody is ready for a motion. Mayor Protem Bob Engler?
I'd be happy to make a motion. Do we have speakers first?
No, we don't have any speakers at all. Otherwise...
I believe Mr. McQueeney may wish to speak, but if you want to address that to him, he may wish to just allow you to proceed with the evening as well.
That's quite all right. I was told he would be available only for questions, but if he wants to chime in, he doesn't have to.
I'm happy either way. The evening is late. If you guys want to make a motion, I'm happy to hear it.
Okay. Mr. Engler?
Very good. Then I'll be happy to make the motion, and I won't bother to read through all the recommendations from staff. I would just move the recommendations in bulk. I agree with you. This has been a multi-year effort on part of a lot of people to make this happen. I think the result is that we're going to be able to honor our Western past and keep some of our equestrian history alive at this location, and that the children of our area will be able to get a taste for what was here before. I think that's a very nice way of moving forward. But most importantly, I think, we're able to realign the operation there with an organization that is much better suited to a recreation purpose. And it dovetails very well with the operations that are already going out there in the recreation field. So the fact that we can also now own the property beneath our library is, to me, icing on the cake. And I wish Godspeed for this effort.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm very happy to support the motion. I just wondered whose bright idea it was to tie the Rancho Potrero property to the land under the library. That was rather ingenious, wasn't it? I mean...
I think so.
I didn't quite get the tie-up, but somebody thought of that evidently.
I think I can speak for, you know, Mr. Giles, who deserves to be commended in his work on this effort from the very beginning, was working collaboratively with CRPD and identifying ways to clean up loose ends and to win the original agreements where it placed for that. That was one of those things, a legacy issue. Because there was a property swap happening, it gave an opportunity to revisit that. Tim, do you want to speak to that?
I was just going to say, it goes back to the cleanup of the issues to solidify the partnership that we enjoy with CRPD. And that has been a broad-based team approach from city staff, as well as CRPD staff. And a lot of people have contributed to that and helped us to keep our eye on the ball of looking for efficiencies and improvements in that partnership, which is why it's lasted as long as it has, and why it looks like it will be a benefit to the city for a long time in the future.
Can we now say that the library is on firm ground?
We'll let you say that.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Yes, this definitely was not an easy case. And Mr. Giles learned a lot more about the equestrian world than he ever dreamed of, and is now an expert in all things equine. So I really appreciate that. Again, three years. It's been three years. So very happy about this elegant solution that we are voting on tonight. And if there are no other comments, I will call for a vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes, and the motion did include the amended recommendation, as in the supplemental packet. Again, thank you very much, CRPD, and city staff, Tim Giles, Tom Hare, and Mr. McQueeney. I know you will continue to do an excellent job over there with the ranch and preserve this heritage that we hold near and dear to our hearts. Thank you so much, and you have a good evening.
Madam Mayor, if I could just...
You all very much. We're very excited.
Madam Clerk?
If I could just announce, the motion did carry 4-0 with Councilmember McNamie recusing.
That's right. Okay. Thank you so much. And we are now moving on to, I believe, city manager, Mr. Powers?
Yes, thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Just, again, want to compliment the staff team, CRPD team, and Mr. McQueeney for the collaborative effort on this. It's a major undertaking and a big win. We, our next meeting will be two weeks from tonight, and that will be our annual goal and priority session with the city council. And that concludes my update for this evening. I know it's been a late one, and we have a couple of closed session items.
Yes, the city attorney will announce the closed session items, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have two closed session items tonight. The first one is conference with real property negotiators for 41 acres on APN 520180245, and a portion of APN 52018155. Negotiating on behalf of the city is Nader Hidari, Deputy Public Works Director. Negotiating on behalf of the parties, Tony Stafford, is the General Manager with Cam Rosa. Under negotiation will be price and terms pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The second closed session is a conference with labor negotiators for city-designated representatives, Assistant City Manager Ingrid Hardy, Finance Director Jamie Boscarino, Human Resources Director Tim Giles, Deputy Human Resources Director Sharon Chin, for employee organizations TOSIA, Toma, and SMA, and executive managers pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. And it is unlikely I'll have anything to report following those closed sessions.
Thank you so much. And we will adjourn tonight in memory of a distinguished community member, James David Power III. He passed away on January 23rd. A resident of Thousand Oaks since 1975, Dave was born in Massachusetts and a graduate from College of the Holy Cross. He served four years as a line officer aboard the Coast Guard Icebreaker East Wind in the Arctic and Antarctic. During his service, he appeared in a Disney film, Men Against the Arctic, about icebreakers. Dave earned an MBA from the Wharton School of Finance at the University of Pennsylvania, and joined Ford Motor Company as a financial analyst, later working as a marketing research consultant for General Motors Corporation. In 1968, Dave, with his wife Julie, created the iconic marketing information firm JD Powers and Associates on the dining room table in their Calabasas home. Dave said, "We started on the kitchen table with three kids, a fourth one on the way. My wife did the tabulations for me. My kids folded the questionnaires and cover letters and put a quarter on each using Scotch tape as an incentive to complete the survey. As we grew, we called anyone that worked there an associate." Equipped with data and analysis, Dave Power spent more than 35 years as a premier resource in the customer satisfaction industry. He sent surveys by mail to millions of consumers. The results were a standard for companies that wanted to include consumer satisfaction in their insurance programs and came to symbolize quality rankings in autos and consumer products. In 2002, Dave leased the former IBM building on Towns Gate. And over the years, hundreds of local community members worked at JD Powers and Associates. Dave had a deep connection with his associates and loved to wander around offices, checking in with staff, encouraging new ideas, and telling stories. In addition to raising a family and building a company, over the years, he quietly provided support to a wide range of local charities, organizations, and educational institutions. Dave had a real passion for education, and he loved sharing his experiences with high school students, and especially with students at CLU. Contributions Dave and family made to the community include the Conejo Valley Unified and Conejo Schools Foundation, Senior Concerns, CRPD, Play Conejo, CLU, Interface Children and Family Services, and many mentions. Dave is survived by his wife Joan and four children. We mourn his passing and extend our sincere condolences to his family and his many worldwide friends. Dave will be greatly missed. And with that, we conclude our city council meeting until March 30th, when we have, I believe, a goal-setting session. And then the regular meeting after that will be on April 13th. We all have a good night.